Okay, I call the order, this regularly scheduled meeting of the 34th City Council for August 23rd, 2022 at 7:30 PM. Can everyone please silence your phones so to not disturb the meeting? Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember Al Sowafi. Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here. We have a call. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Councilmember Ken Paris. Ken?
Thank you, Council President. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Pastor Dan Ranthan from Guardian Lutheran Church, who will give tonight's invocation. Everyone who is able, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. A few verses from Psalm 33. The counsel of the Lord stands forever, the plans of his heart to all generations. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, the people whom he has chosen as his heritage. The Lord looks down from heaven; he sees all the children of man from where he sits enthroned. He looks out on all the inhabitants of the earth, and we pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this opportunity tonight. We pray your blessings, continued blessings, on our mayor and council members and all of our first responders and businesses and residents of Dearborn and so many blessings you shower down upon us. May you give your strength and blessings and guidance to all of them. We think also of our schools and staff, starting in college and high school and grade school all the way through with that time of the summer. We just pray your blessing upon all of them also. All these prayers we bring to you and we just pray your guidance and blessing on this meeting tonight. We pray this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Let me begin to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate you showing up on a short notice, so we do appreciate you always coming and filling in for us. Okay, at this time, we are having a new agenda. Some of us have been talking about this for a while, but I want to make sure the residents understand that the council has changed our agenda items in order to make sure that residents are being heard for at least the first 30 minutes of the meeting. There's cards. Do we have the cards here? We have...
There and in the back.
Yeah, there's green cards on either side. If anybody has public comment, you need to fill it up, fill it out and bring it up here to the clerk. Each meeting will start with a 30-minute public comment section, and then there's also public comment at the end of the meeting, as historically that has been. Of course, every agenda item, any member of the public can speak on that when the item is presented as well. So at this time, we just wanted to see, is there any cards, Mr. Clerk?
Not yet, no.
Okay. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment to the council before, and you're filling it up, you can bring up, you can come straight up, ma'am, and we can address your issue. Yes, you could come on up. That's okay. If you, yep, that's fine. You could fill it, yes, you can come right up here. So the protocol, ma'am, is you state your name and address for the record. No, on the other side. Right, there's a microphone right there. Okay, and then you could kindly just state your name and address for the record, and then you could fill that out and hand it to the clerk when you, when you're completed. Go ahead, ma'am, you may proceed.
Karen Obatsensky, on that 220 Highview Street, Dearborn, Michigan. I walk a lot, and I've noticed that especially on Gully Road, there's been a lot of cars parked on either side of the street because of lack of parking. And we, it looks like they've been doing some construction on, on the roadways, and a lot of times, there's like, I see people passing around, other cars are going too slow. Okay, you've got cars parked here, someone could be walking behind them trying to get to their car, and they miss them. I think that maybe they should do is either make it a double yellow line, no passing on Gully, or the other possibility is, another thing is maybe it's slow the speed limit down to 25 miles an hour. And the other thing is, right there on Gully and Cherry Hill, I'm not sure what time of the night that they have it into a stop, they don't have the blinking lights now there on the corner. And I'll tell you how many sirens I hear on that quarter, and there's a lot of accidents on that. So I don't know, it's, it's like, it's a blinking red light on, on Gully and flashing gold, yellow light on Cherry Hill.
Cherry Hill, yeah.
And it's just like, I don't know, I think you see sirens there all the time around the corner.
Well, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I can tell you that I live near the area, and I know there's a lot of construction there too, so a lot of people are taking alternate route and diverting to that area. So we do have our chief of police back there in the back corner.
Okay.
He's raising his hand. So what I suggest, after you fill out that card and hand it to our clerk, you can see the chief, and I'm sure he can then see what he could do for you. Probably send some enforcement to make sure that it's obeying, because we don't want to have any accidents.
Yeah, yeah, and especially, like I said, with, with those cars parked on the street, because there's nothing on the driveways.
Of course.
Yeah, that even slows down.
Right, right. Absolutely. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
If you could fill that out and then see the chief.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else here from the public that would like to come forward and state their name and address for the record and speak on city business? Okay, hearing done. Mr. Clerk, that would conclude the first 30-minute session of our council meeting. Can you proceed with the first item?
Item number four, resolution by Councilmember Serini and Herrick acknowledging the Warren Bike Shop 50-year anniversary and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So at this time, I have a really long experience with our Warren Bike Shop, as I was a frequent member when I was a kid growing up on Oakman. And I seen this story, our office staff had seen it, that the business has been in operation in the city of Dearborn for 50 years. My colleagues, I'm sure, agree with me. We decided to honor this business owner. To tell you, our, my parents had three small restaurants. I know a lot of us up here have worked in small businesses. They are the fabric of our community. And for me to see a business as a bike shop that has thrived for 50 years, and then Mr. Sheikh had told me 50 years and six months. So we gotta make that correction. And still running in optimal, and serving the community is a very big deal. I felt it was worthy for the legislative body in the 34th City Council to award this family, Mr. Sheikh, his son, and his family, his daughters, who have been in this business for many, many years. I can speak for myself, growing up in the area in East Dearborn, riding my bike over there and, and having it fixed and repaired. It was always a pleasure to have someone. In those early ages, a bike was just like a car, if not better. And if it wasn't working properly, or you didn't have a place to even purchase a bike or get it repaired, the Warren Bike Shop on Warren Avenue was your place to go. I can tell you that it's an honor for me as the council president to bring this citation forward on behalf of your family. And I would like to open it up if anyone else has an opportunity, or I know if anybody has been there, they can make some comments. And then we'd like to bring you up and your family for a nice photo with this, with the council, as unanimous roll will do at the end. We'll, we'll sure carry this motion. And I want to make sure that the people understand that 50 years in business is a long time, and it's well appreciated in Dearborn. We'd like to thank you and your family, Mr. Sheikh. And 50 more years for the Bike Shop on Warren Avenue.
Yes.
All right. Any of my colleagues have any comments? I'm not sure if anybody had frigging that. Mayor?
So, so if I can just, you know, dovetail off your kind of bandwagon here. You know, my aunt lived on Pinehurst, and so grew up in that neighborhood. I think my father bought one redline bike for the first three boys from, that we shared from your Bike Shop, with a tri-star rims and the front and back pecks. And some of our greatest childhood memories were on that bike that passed down from son to son to son to son, and then ultimately to my sister. But, you know, the memories that we have are because of the business that you operate. And it wasn't just about purchasing the bike, it was about the relationship that was built with those that operated and ran the store. And so Al Fumabruk on 50 years, Inshallah, 100 more to come. And thank you for operating in the city of Dearborn. Who would have thought that we went through an era where everybody rode a bike, and they kind of lulled for a little bit? And now we're back in the day and age where cycling is being pushed more than ever. And it's exciting, it's exciting to see that the same business is still present and ready to prepare and provide a product and a service to a community for hopefully decades and more generations more to come. So thank you for the childhood memories, and I'm hoping that when my daughter's of age, I can bring her by to buy her first bike.
All right.
From your Bike Shop. So thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, for your comments. At this time, at this time, we're gonna have the family come up on the front. My colleagues, if we may, we're gonna come down. Mayor, if you'd like to join us, we'll get a quick photo and give you the citation and then close it. Yep? Mr. Clerk, you join us. Thank you, Mayor. All right, thank you. I apologize for that short delay. We have another one, but Mr. Clerk, for formality, you would need a unanimous roll regarding this.
Yes.
So hearing no objections to the citation, 50 years of business to the Warren Bike Shop and the Sheikh family, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item five, resolution by Councilmembers Serini and Herrick acknowledging Nancy Seewick's 21 years of service on the Dearborn Planning Commission and requesting immediate effect.
All right, excellent. So Mrs. Nancy Seewick has been a longstanding member of the community of the city of Dearborn. And one thing, what happens during change with new administration, we don't want to lose the, the knowledge and the history that we have in the city of Dearborn, and recognizing people that have made tremendous sacrifices. And believe me, we are making a sacrifice as council, we chose to do that, but a lot of other people that volunteer in our planning commissions, our several commissions and boards, our zoning boards, it's very, very, very important work. And Mrs. Seewick has served over 20 years, has tremendous knowledge, and we wanted to make sure that she was recognized and honored by the city council, the legislative body regarding what work she's done. The Planning Commission advises the council on many, many facets of zoning, planning, and what has to be done, what, where things, what businesses can open where. It's a very, very important board in the city. And Mrs. Seewick chaired it for, I believe, eight or, eight or nine years as well. For me personally, I have a personal relationship with Mrs. Seewick. I thought she's done a tremendous job. I was introduced to her back in probably 2010 by my mom, and she has done tremendous work for the city. And for me personally, I think we must be recognized, and I wanted to make sure that we took an opportunity to do that here tonight. Does anyone else on the council have anything they'd like to say? Councilman Paris?
Thank you for this opportunity, Council President. This is Seewick. I want to say personally, thank you. 21 years just on the Planning Commission, and we know that you served a number of years on other commissions and boards within the city, some other organizations and groups. You helped out prior administrations when you were asked to come forward because of your expertise and knowledge of the city. I personally want to say thank you, and I'm sure the council is also by bringing this forward. But, you know, well before I was even serving on city council, I attended a number of the Planning Commission meetings, and I will tell you, your direction, your leadership, was intensely felt by everybody that was in that room. You had control of the meeting. But more importantly to me is you had a history. You knew what was taking place in the past and how we should go forward in the future, and have that intimate knowledge of what's needed. So I just personally wanted to say thank you so much for you and, of course, the time away from your family. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Paris. Councilwoman Herrick? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. I want to echo the sentiments of Council President and Councilwoman Paris. Nancy Seewick has served for many, many years, over 20 years, on the City Planning Commission, and as Council President said, it's one of the most influential commissions in shaping what we see in our city today, what it looks like, and what it will look like going forward. And sometimes it's thankless work. There can be a lot of pressure you do, you have time away from your family and friends, and you're giving up weeknights that you might otherwise want to be doing something. But beyond what we see at those meetings, the research that you do and the work that you put into it to be able to lead the commission and develop the expertise and share that with the public, we know that it goes very deep. And I personally as well, thank you very much for the, the time and extend a thank you for all that time that maybe you didn't feel so thanked.
Right, it is a thankless job. And before I turn it over to Councilman Abraham, people, some people don't know, but Mrs. Seewick runs a very successful business that is very, very demanding, and you want to let people know what kind of business you run, but it's a, it's a very demanding business, and it deals with the federal government. And I know what kind of work you have to do during the day, so for you to give that time, it's, it's very, very thoughtful. Councilman Abraham?
Yeah, I thank you, and thank you for your service. We appreciate that. I think what I'd like to leave with people, a lot of good things have already been said, but when we have commissioners that serve, whether it's short time or long time, I think what it demonstrates is just their love of our community. And I think Nancy, you've demonstrated that for decades, and I think it's very important that the city recognizes people like yourself in all kinds of different capacities, because we can only do so much as the council, as the elected officials. The mayor cannot be everywhere. But what I think we gain with people like you serving the communities, we gain what I call ambassadors out there, people that understand what's going on at City Hall, can explain it to our residents, to their neighbors, so that there is some face-to-face communication at times when not all of us can be out there everywhere. And I know you've done that in, in a very dedicated fashion for all of us, for the entire city, and it helps weave our community together by having more people involved at City Hall that can leave here every, every week and visit with their neighbors, friends and families, and again, face-to-face, explain what's going on. When you travel around the United States and around the world, tell people what a great community this is. And I think that's, to me, the bottom line is, is letting people that truly love our community serve and let them take it back to their areas, their neighborhoods, and share that experience with them. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Abraham. At this time, Mrs. Seewick, if you'd like to come forward, the council's gonna come out here and like to present you with the citation, then we will continue the meeting. All right, thank you for the patience on that. I'm gonna just read this resolution into the record, Mr. Clerk. The 34th City Council recognized the Planning Commissioner Nancy Seewick, and it is recognized that Nancy Seewick has served 21 years on the Dearborn Planning Commission, seven years as the chairperson, and whereas to honor her talents and her expertise on active community concerns and zoning regulations, therefore, let it be resolved that the city council acknowledges Nancy Seewick's 21 years of service on the Dearborn Planning Commission and may further have, this resolution have immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached. Mrs. Seewick, thank you very much for your service. Okay, next item, Mr. Clerk.
So the next item is, is a new item. It's a resolution in need of offer and support approving all the consent agenda items and requesting immediate effect.
All offered.
All support?
Okay, offered by Councilman Abraham and supported by Councilwoman Burns. For the residents to understand, we have a meeting on Thursday, I just want to give some background, which is called the Committee of the Whole, where we set the meeting and the agenda for tonight's meeting. So that's why sometimes you might see people not saying too much, they do a lot of that during the Thursday meeting. The council has agreed, as many other councils throughout the state of Michigan, that we have, and was actually brought forward, I think, by the mayor at one point in the first eight months, that we could consent to a number of items that did not need to be read into the record to make our meetings more efficient. So at this time, this is what's happening. There is approximately, Mr. Clerk, how many items do you have?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine items that on the Committee of the Whole, that we decided, at the Committee of the Whole, to be voted as one consent agenda item, which we had offered by Councilman Abraham and Councilwoman Burns. The theory behind this is not to not disclose any information to our residents, it is to further make meetings more effective, more efficient, on things that we all know, our basic housekeeping, or things that just need to get done that are not really relevant to being read into the record as far as for residents to hear on the microphone. But it is still part of the official record, and it's still part of our minutes, so I wanted to make sure everybody knew that. Do you want to add?
I was gonna.
Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you, Council President, for that overview. And just for anyone who might be looking at the agenda online, or folks who are in the audience today who have a paper copy, Council President, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's items seven through 36 that are on the consent agenda. So if you want, I think, flip ahead to item 37.
That is...
I believe that's where we'll pick up next, correct?
You're absolutely, yeah, you're absolutely right. I appreciate that.
Through 35, actually.
Oh, okay.
Thirty-five?
That's noted differently in my book.
Yeah, mine is 37, too. Okay.
Okay.
No question, we'll go with yours, but thank you, Councilwoman. I had it at 37 as well, but it is the first meeting of this way that we're doing it, but I think it's gonna be more effective. So for item six, the consent agenda having immediate effect, we had an offer by Councilman Abraham and supported by Councilwoman Burns. Any objection to the consent agenda, or does any council member like to remove something off the consent agenda item and place it on the regular item, as a regular item? Okay, hearing and seeing...
Council President, we need to have a roll call vote on this.
Okay. Yes, I do see that. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So roll call vote, it is.
And because this is an historic event, we'll start with you, Council President.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Six yeas, the motion passes.
All right, thank you very much.
So now we... I'm sorry?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
So now we'll move on, on my agenda, to number 36, which is a resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Paris approving the minutes of the previous special meeting of July 26, 2022, and July 27, 2022, and the previous regular meeting of July 12, 2022.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, thank you for that. For, just for a housekeeping aspect, I do not have the 36 as a, well, the Council President pro temp does not, but I understand that it's a housekeeping. I have it on this agenda, but not in our book. So 36 is regarding the previous meeting, special meeting and the minutes.
Yes.
Okay. That was read into the record, so we need, unanimous roll will be attached unless hearing objection to those. Okay, so it's attached, next item.
Item 37, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 22-1756, an ordinance to amend the offenses chapter, chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article VII, Section 14-265, entitled Fireworks, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Paris to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached to take, to take from the table for its final reading. The proposed amendment revises ordinance section 14-265 to incorporate the statutory process for seeking approval of public or private display of certain fireworks. The proposed amendments codify the statutory process to make it easier for public and city personnel to understand what is necessary for local requirement without having to cross-reference state statutes. Public Act 256 of 2011 governs the use of possession of fireworks in the state and gives a local, a local legislative body the authority to approve or deny requests on private or public display of certain fireworks. Our current ordinance 14-265 reflects the permissible locations of fireworks under state law, but does not currently reflect the process for local review and consent contained in the state law. This proposed amendment incorporates the process to ensure that both prospective applicants and city personnel are aware of what is necessary for local review and avoids any cross-references again. The application fee is $200 and is non-refundable. This is the second and final reading of the ordinance. Is there any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1756, entitled an ordinance to amend the offenses chapter, chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article VII, Section 14-265, entitled Fireworks.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 38, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 22-1757, an ordinance to amend the administrative chapter, chapter two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Division III, entitled Department of Technology and Innovation, resolution by Councilmembers Herrick and Paris to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached to take from the table for its final reading. The proposed revisions change is to change the name, change the name of the department from tech, technology and, I'm sorry, to technology and, from technology and innovation to the Department of Innovation and Technology, so IT and more standard use. And that's, that is what we want to make it so it be more accessible and more used in the standard practice. The proposed amendment changes the name of the department to a term that's more commonly used and described. This is the second final reading of this ordinance. Are there any questions or concerns on this item? Okay. Good? Councilman Hamud, you good? Yeah. Well, it's back to IT, which is standard in the industry. All right. Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1757, entitled an ordinance to amend the administrative chapter, chapter two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Division III, entitled Department of Technology and Innovation.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilman Hamud?
Yes.
Six, I'm sorry, six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Okay, next item, please.
Ordinance on the table, ordinance number 22-1758, an ordinance to amend the administrative chapter, chapter two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 2.52, entitled Chief Strategy Officer, and adding Section 52A, resolution by Councilmembers Burns and Hamud to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached to take from the table for its final reading. The proposed amendment of ordinance section 2-52 downgrades the position of Chief Strategy Officer to Strategy Officer, and the proposed new ordinance section 2-52A creates a new senior advisor position. The mayor, the mayor may designate at his, his or her discretion in, from one of their director appointees in the capacity of senior advisor with compensation not to exceed $5,000 annually. The senior advisor shall not duplicate or supplement any other duties of any other appointees. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Mr. Clerk, can we have the second and final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1758, entitled an ordinance to amend the administration chapter, chapter two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 2-52, entitled Chief Strategy Officer, and adding Section 52A.
Roll call vote, Mr. Clerk, please.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilman Hamud?
Yes.
Councilman Abraham?
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Okay, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 40, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 22-1759, an ordinance to amend the traffic and motor vehicle chapter, chapter 18 of the Code... traffic and motor vehicle chapter, chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 18-473, entitled Same Enumeration, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Paris to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached to take from the table for its final reading. The proposed amendment removes Eagle Street between Wyoming and Amazon as a permitted truck route. As a, as a result, trucks weighing more than 4,000 pounds will be prohibited from using this road. Removing truck traffic from Eagle Street will reduce traffic congestion and noise in the area. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilwoman Herrick?
I just wanted to thank the administration and my colleagues on council for bringing this ordinance forward. The neighborhood that we're talking about, for those who aren't familiar with Eagle Street and that, in that neighborhood, it's residential, and it's a heavy industrial area around it. And this is something that the residents have been waiting for, for some time, to see some relief from the trucks that have been traveling down the streets where children are playing. So, thank you for the support in bringing this forward.
Absolutely, a long time coming. Any other questions or comments by my colleagues? Okay, hearing seen, then, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1759, entitled an ordinance to amend the traffic and motor vehicle chapter, chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 18-473, entitled Same Enumeration.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilman Hamud?
Yes.
Councilman Abraham?
Yes.
Councilman Paris?
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Okay, next item, please.
Item 41, ordinance on the table, I'm sorry, item 41 ordinance on the table, ordinance number 22-1760, an ordinance to amend the nuisances chapter, chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 14-44, entitled Emergency Service Cost Recovery Ordinance, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Herrick to take from the table for its final reading.
And a unanimous roll will be attached to take from the table for its final reading. The cost recovery ordinance currently allows recovery of costs associated with emergency responses by the fire department for calls for emergency medical and hazard material responses and other calls. The proposed amendment adds to category Technical Rescue to the existing ordinance, which will allow the city to pursue cost recovery on these items, such as life-saving rescue procedures. Technical rescue includes structural collapse and search, rescue search, vehicle search and rescue, and water search and rescue, as well as tower, among other, other things that were added. The amendment creates a potential for greater cost recovery by expanding the types of emergency responses that can be, that can, we seek for recovery. This is the second final reading of this ordinance. Is there any questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1760, entitled an ordinance to amend the nuisances chapter, chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 14-44, entitled Emergency Service Cost Recovery Ordinance.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item number 42, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 22-1761, an ordinance to amend the administrative chapter, chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 2-526, entitled Transfers, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Herrick to take from the table for its final reading.
And a unanimous roll attached to take from the table for its final reading. The ordinance section 2-526 contains language that refers to provisions in Section 13.6 of the 1979 City Charter, which was removed by the Charter Commission in 2007. The proposed amendment removes this language, making it consistent with Section 13.6 of the current charter, and clarifies that no full or part-time budgeted personnel positions may be added to a department without council approval. This amendment provides the council with greater oversight of personnel staffing within the city. This is the second final reading of this ordinance. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first, the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1761, entitled an ordinance to amend the administrative chapter, chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 2-526, entitled Transfers.
Roll call vote, please.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item 43, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 22-1763, an ordinance to amend the Fire Prevention and Protection chapter, chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 10-41, entitled Reserved, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Hamud to take from the table for its final reading.
And a unanimous roll attached to take from the table for its final reading. The proposed ordinance is in response to recent fires at Furias Scrapyard at 3651 Wyoming, which resulted in damage to fire department equipment. The National Fire Protection Act currently only requires fire watch in situations where a fire protection system is inoperable or defective or hot works, and when buildings, buildings are under construction or demolition. Neither of this would have been applicable in the furious fire that happened at the City of Dearborn. The ordinance expands the fire watch to require, to be required, a requirement to include situation where the fire chief deems are hazardous to life or property, which will hopefully reduce the number of fires in locations and situations where a fire watch is not currently required. The violation of the ordinance is a civil infraction punishable by, by, by other things, a maximum fine of $5,000. This is the second final reading of this item. Any questions or comments on this item? Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1763, entitled an ordinance to amend the Fire Prevention and Protection chapter, chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Section 10-41, entitled Reserved.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item 44, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 22-1764, an ordinance to amend Section 9.02 of ordinance number 06-1111 of the City of Dearborn by rezoning the properties located at 3601, 3615, and 3625 Westwood Avenue, and 3850 through 3800 Heritage Parkway, from an RA, One Family Residential District, to a VP, Vehicle or Parking District zoning classification, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Burns to take from the table for its final reading.
And a unanimous roll will be attached to take from the table for its final reading. The requested parcels have been functionally informally as a public parking lot which serves an adjacent non-residential uses, specifically the Hattie Youth Institute and the Community Center, which is located east of the subject site. The parcels have been used as a parking lot as far back as 1961, and have been maintained and paved periodically, I'm sorry, unpaved, but have been maintained periodically. The proposed, propose, propose, excuse me, rezoning will not negatively impact the surrounding parcels and will allow the site to redevelop into VP parking standards, with this buffer as abutting residential properties and will resolve, and will resolve issues of tracking out issues into the public right of way because the, the lot is not paved. This is the second final reading of this ordinance. Is there any questions or comments on this ordinance? Councilman Hamud?
Normally, as I've said many times in public, I'm categorically against adding more parking lots to the city. However, in this specific case, it's already essentially functioning as a really poorly maintained parking lot. So, I think in this case, we're just changing the usage to what it actually is used, which I think is actually a very intelligent thing to do, because then we can probably write, properly regulate maintenance, water runoff, you know, make sure that it adheres to current parking lot codes, you know, that, because there are residential homes right nearby, and they can have water issues if there's no kind of, let's say, detention reservoir under the parking lot and things. So, this was a relatively smart move by planning, even though ideologically I might not be super on board, but...
Well, we appreciate it. The VP does also create buffers, which you indicated, which will give more, a green belt between the residents and the parking lot. So, absolutely, we do, I think we all agree this is, and a long time coming, so. Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading of this ordinance?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1764, entitled an ordinance to amend Section 9.02 of ordinance number 06-1111 of the City of Dearborn by rezoning the properties located at 3601, 3615, and 3625 Westwood Avenue, and 3850 through 3800 Heritage Parkway, from an RA to a VP zoning classification.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
Roll call?
Roll call vote, I apologize. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilman Hamud?
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item 45, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 22-1765, an ordinance to amend Section 9.02 of ordinance number 06-1111 of the City of Dearborn by rezoning the properties located at 15625, 15725, and 15825 Lundey Parkway, from a TR, Technology and Research District, to a BC, General Business District zoning classification, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Hamud to take from the table for its final reading.
Yes, and a unanimous roll will be attached, taking this from the table for its final reading. The existing zoning is Technology Research District. The proposed zoning is General Business District. The site is approximately 7.67 acres and is currently undeveloped. The future land use plan aligns with the, with either BC, General Business District, or TR, Research District, in all, in, I'm sorry, in all industrial zoning classifications. This rezoning request is supplemented by the city, indicating the request for adjacent properties in order to be consistent with the master plan and avoid spot zoning. The proposed rezoning will not have a negative impact on the adjacent properties, and uses permitted in the BC district are generally considered compatible with surrounding land uses. This is the second and final reading of this item. Any questions or concerns, my colleague? Councilman Hamud?
So, another thing to kind of explain a little more on this one. So, current technology zoning is very restrictive on uses like light manufacturing and, and very like office space oriented developments. And the problem is now we have a huge abundancy, especially after COVID, of, of office space in Dearborn, and so by zoning more things BC, as we're gonna see in the rest of the meeting, if my colleagues approve, hopefully, it helps, you know, create newer developments that are more mixed use, especially BC, which are just a much more modern way of construction. You know, you get kind of like what's going on in the downtown districts where you have retail, and then you have, let's say, residential or space above it. So, this is also another, like, very big modernization that I think is, is gonna be very important to help the city be more even financially viable by allowing for more tax revenue from the actual developments that are gonna take place in these places. So, I, I think this is also a great move on the part of our planning.
Excellent. Anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Okay. Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1765, entitled an ordinance to amend Section 9.02 of ordinance number 06-1111 of the City of Dearborn by rezoning the properties located at 15625, 15725, and 15825 Lundey Parkway, from a TR to a BC business zoning classification.
Okay, unanimous roll will be attached, take this from the table for its final reading. This is, this is another existing zoning that is Technology and Research District. The proposed zoning is General Business District. To rezon, the request is to rezon 12 properties that are currently zoned BB to a BC, General Business District. Although the Planning Commission has recommended approval in December 2020, however, this item was withdrawn by the administration and is now brought forward at this time. The intent behind rezoning this area to BC is to reposition these properties, and the uses permitted in BC to reposition them for additional infill and help activate this area, allowing for various uses. This rezoning will not have a negative impact on adjacent properties, and the uses permitted in BC are generally considered compatible with surrounding land uses. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Any questions or concerns on this item? Okay. Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1765, entitled an ordinance to amend Section 9.02 of ordinance number 06-1111 of the City of Dearborn by rezoning the properties located at 15625, 15725, and 15825 Lundey Parkway, from a TR to a BC zoning classification.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilman Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item number 46, ordinance on the table, ordinance number 22-1766, an ordinance to amend Section 9.02 of ordinance number 06-1111 of the City of Dearborn by rezoning the properties located south of Lundey Parkway and Mercury Drive, and bounded by Southville Freeway, Ford Road, and Greenfield Road, from a TR, Technology and Research District, to a BC, General Business District zoning classification, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Paris to take from the table for its final reading.
Mr. Clerk, is that 47? 46?
46.
Yeah, because I just wanna make sure I have a different, I had Herrick and Hamud, you have Herrick and Paris?
Uh, yes, I do.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I got them wrong. Okay. Unanimous roll will be attached to take this item for, to the table, take it from the table for its final reading. The existing zoning, again, is Technology Research District. Proposed zoning is General Business District. And again, this has also been brought forward by our Planning Commission and Planning Department. The intent is to rezon to BC, to reposition these properties for better redevelopment and activate the area. This will not negatively impact the surrounding properties and is considered in, in compliance with our master plan. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading?
This is the final reading of ordinance number 22-1766, entitled an ordinance to amend Section 9.02 of ordinance number 06-1111 of the City of Dearborn by rezoning the properties located south of Lundey Parkway and Mercury Drive, and bounded by Southville Freeway, Ford Road, and Greenfield Road, from a TR to a BC zoning classification.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item, please.
Item forty-seven ordinance on the table ordinance number two two dash one seven six seven and ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Dearborn by amending section sixteen point zero two, article sixteen point zero zero entitled BC General Business District. Resolution by council members Herrick and Hamud to take from the table for its final reading.
An unanimous roll will be attached to take from the table for its final reading. The proposed amendment would reclassify hotels as a permitted use to a special land use in the Business C zoning district. This would allow this category to, of course, to go undergo a more thorough review under a more comprehensive special land use standards. Hotels and motels are subject to site development standards, including providing medium minimum site area of three acres. The proposed amendment will still permit hotels and motels in the Business C District. However, it will be subject to Planning Commission review and approval. All proposed motels and hotels would be subject to the site special land use provisions and approval from the Planning Commission in accordance with standards outlined by our city zoning department. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Any questions or comments on this item?
If I may, after you.
Yeah, no, go ahead, actually.
Thank you, Council President. Just to clarify what this ordinance does, it makes it far more difficult for anyone to open up a hotel or motel in the city of Dearborn. What we found, in my administration at least, is that most of the hotels and motels we have have been very problematic, several of which, for example, have over 250 emergency calls a year because of several reasons which we're trying to work on now. But we want to make it more difficult for these types of hotels and motels to pop up in the city of Dearborn. And so adding the special land use requisite would basically mean you have to get additional layers of approval before you can even begin to consider opening up a hotel or motel in the city of Dearborn.
Thank you, Mayor Councilman Hamud.
So, I was going to say in a lighter way. So, I was going to say, so now that we're kind of, we'll call it liberalizing the zoning and making it a little bit more modern in terms of usage of what's called BC, which allows for mixed use residential, which is like, again, a more modern way of of building developments. What this allows us to do is require more approvals for motels and hotels, which would have normally sat, you know, by right inside of a BC. So, this is a very clever move on the part of administration. And I appreciate that they're not just kind of opening the floodgates on BC and that we're going to be very careful about what kind of things develop in these areas. So, kudos to our and to our economic development team as well on working on this.
Right, thank you. Just to clarify, I from some of the statements, to make sure we clarify, a special land use is not intended to make things harder for a business to open. It's intended to remedy the situations that the mayor is indicating where there is a tremendous amount of resources being used because the business has not went through a proper vetting or has been established as regular standards, which they are in industries and hotels and motel industry. So, the special land use is the term is if it was in place, we wouldn't have as much situations that we do have today. So, I think that's a better way to sum it up as well. This is the final reading of this ordinance. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay. Mr. Clerk, can we have the final reading, please?
This is the final reading of ordinance number two two dash one seven six seven entitled an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinances of the city of Dearborn by amending section sixteen point zero two, article sixteen point zero zero entitled BC General Business District.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Six yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next item, please.
Item forty-eight ordinance on the table ordinance number two two dash one seven six eight and ordinance to amend the fees for permits and inspection inspections, chapter nine of the city of Dearborn by amending the economic development rates, section nine dash three through nine dash four hundred. Resolution by council members Burns and Herrick to take from the table for its final reading.
Okay, an unanimous roll will be attached to take the item from from the table for its final reading. This is a request to amend the economic development rate ordinances for fiscal year 2023 and to permit and and update permit application fees, inspection fees, planning fees, and zoning fees as well. The goal of the proposed increases and new fees is to more formally capture the true service costs without subsidizing these costs from our general fund. After consulting with our building, planning, and zoning teams on current costs of service delivery, the department is recommending the following changes. An increase of all building service permits, permit inspection, plan review, sales rent, sales and rental, and reoccupancy by five percent. There's also an increase of Planning Commission application fees as follows. A special land use will be increased from $1,000 to $1,200. The site plan review is increased from $750 to $1,000. The alley vacation is is increased from $500 to $900. Rezoning from $1,500 to $1,700. A lot split from $750 to $1,000 and a special meeting request from $500 to $1,000. The new fees that are created to cover costs for technical services provided are administrative site plan review and planning, which is $500. The incentive application fee of economic development is $1,500. Applicants will see a modest increase in fees proportional to the size of their project and homeowners and small business owners doing work on their properties will see minimal impact and the revenue generated will recapture the cost recovery service delivery, particularly for large and more complex developments and requiring that require planning or council approval. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance. Any questions or comments on this item?
If I may, Council President.
Yes.
So, bear with me. I'm going to slow. I'm going to just. So, bear with me, I guess, at one point. And this is going to be a surprise to all of you potentially. So, under section nine point four zero interval inspection, what we'd like to do, if the council is open to it, is bring up all the interval section fees to $100 uniform across the types of businesses. We bumped it up based on what the previous fees were, but after further evaluation with our director, you know, somebody tell me the difference between inspecting a car wash versus inspecting a bowling alley and why one should be $20 cheaper than the other.
Right.
For us, it's going to be the same level level labor intensive across the board. And we kind of want to just bring uniformity to the inspections that are happening to these businesses, however frequent they may be. You know, for example, a barber beauty shop is at 50, a barber college is at 60. And so we had bumped them up based on the difference that existed previously. What we'd like to do is try to bring uniformity across the board. So, it's kind of the same inspection fee across the board. It's $100 for a business to get the inspection, whether you're a bowling alley or a barber shop, a car wash, or a funeral home. So, that's just the one recommendation I would have that the council would.
And Mayor, that's the interval inspections?
These are interval inspections. I this doesn't have a page number, so forgive me, but it's section nine dash four zero.
Yeah, I mean, Mayor, I think we would have to. I'd like to. Is the director here?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Tordi, would you like to come up on that? I'm glad you brought up the interval inspections. And and I who is, Mr. Clerk, who is our offer and and support on this item?
Burns and Herrick.
Okay, so they would have to make that amendment.
So, that to me is, you know, the the only modification, if you're open to it, is just to bring us, if a business owner would have told me if I'm a barber shop versus a barber college, why is there a difference between the two? I don't think we'd be able to provide a uniform explanation. But I think if I were to say it's the same cost across the board for a like inspection, that makes more sense. There used to be a difference between, but I think after I reviewed it at least, that's the one thing that just seemed off to me. Otherwise, I'm comfortable with it. If you want to move it as is, that's just the one final suggestion I would have on that front.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I do appreciate it. I do like uniformity. I think it makes sense. But I had a question more in depth on the interval inspections. I'm not sure if the if the directors were prepared to answer. Remember, the the answer, if you don't know, is I don't know. And we'll find out. We don't want to have. Okay, just want to let you know. Interval inspections, in your past experience, have you had any experience with that in your other cities?
I have not.
Right. And that's what I wanted to bring up to my colleagues, Mayor. I was unaware that it was this niche was in here. I don't mind making it uniform a little bit. I want to make it public that I am against interval inspections 100%. And I want to make sure that it's it's said because I believe we're the only city that does do this. So, I know that our previous director is back there. The interval inspections are designed to go back to businesses that already passed inspection and opened lawfully. Okay? What happens then is the city of Dearborn picks and chooses where they'd like to go and say, we'll have an interval inspection to check if you're up to today's codes, which I don't believe is lawful. Mr. Romer, I have made that abundantly clear. I know you're a council now. If you travel to Boston, New York, and other cities, you will find them, Mr. Tordi, cooking. The oldest pizzeria in the in the United States of America is Lombardo's Pizza in New York. I don't know if you've been there. The pizza, the kitchen is in the basement of the building with a with a no egress window and a size of a stairs that's less than 36 inches. I'm not saying that's what we want, but the point is businesses are allowed to thrive because a business has to have an expectation that once they open, that they are bound by the codes at the time of opening. These intervals inspections over the nine years of my tenure have been nothing short of a disaster. Because what's happens is there's no systematic way that they go through them. They go into businesses and then say, we have to bring you up to code when they don't have to go up to code. So, that's my issue. And I know that you had your tenure in.
Ferndale.
In Ferndale for how many years?
For five years.
Yeah. And that's, Mayor, something that I think we should look at. I don't mind making the fee uniformal and passing this ordinance.
Yeah.
But I want to make it abundantly clear. Interval inspections, to ask someone who opened a restaurant, has a grease trap and now and has a three compartment sink and maybe today is now required to have something else, is putting a strain on our businesses that is not required by law.
So, if I may.
Yes, Mayor.
Jordan has anything to add because I think it's due to his department as well, Economic Development here in the city. The way we view, I view interval inspection is to ensure that there's just the same quality kind of existing. What we often find sometimes is we get complaints as a city. This restaurant is very dirty on the inside, is very filthy, or these things are no longer being abided by. It's not to go in there and retroactively say an ordinance has been updated, you now have to change your pre-trap and add this grease trap and things like that nature.
Right, but that's exactly what happened, Mayor.
I understand that's what happened.
I know, but I want you to understand, that's exactly what happened.
I understand that.
A bakery that in this community that's been thriving over over 70 years was asked to put in a grease trap. Now, just because the business owner complied, doesn't mean that that's lawful.
No, I I understand that. I think you see this similarly with like rental properties, right? There are interval inspections of rental properties that are to make sure that the dwellings are up to the standard, also for the safety of the individual that's dwelling at the rental property. And so while I know you're you're pointing to the commercial essence of interval inspections.
Yes, I am.
This is also something that exists on the rental property side from a residential perspective.
My understanding is that the.
And I'm with you about trying to get somebody who was grandfathered in based on the ordinance at the time and trying to get them to maybe invest tens of thousands of dollars to change everything to this day. That's not the goal of this. The goal of this is to make sure that both the patrons as well as the employees are all safe. And, you know, sometimes, most business owners are are fine. But sometimes you have those folks that kind of tried, you know, maybe had something set up for the inspection. And then once the inspection was done, things get undone inside. And that's what we want to prevent. We found this in in some businesses, at least during my tenure, I know that we have. For example, there was a restaurant that was approved to open, but then later we found there was no hood over the actual in the kitchen area. And that's something that would not have been caught. And so sometimes these things can help us avoid catastrophic events at places of business that our residents frequent.
No, I understand, Mayor. I've opened a couple of restaurants. The HVAC in the restaurant, there's a task required for that. That's administered by the county. That is not administered by the by the city of Dearborn. But I understand, but I want to make sure that you understand what I'm concerned about. Mr. Mr. Tordi, there is no systematic interval inspection log or how many times you go or where you go. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, I'm not familiar with how we've done it in the past. But what I do know is as part of updating our processes, we want that consistency and we're going to be looking to codify that. I don't know if.
Yeah.
I know previous director Hawkins is here. I don't want to necessarily put him on the spot.
Yeah, I don't want to put him on the spot. But here's the point. My point to you is there is no process that gives a certain time. I think this is distinguishable from rental housing, Mayor, because the rental housing, this council has a three-year. We have people on here that have rental homes. There is a three-year requirement for the safety. I think it's significantly distinguishable from interval inspection. The interval inspection has been a tool to be used to terrorize businesses in the city of Dearborn. I don't know if I could say it any plainer than that. It's not used in any other manner because there's no yearly. The rental homes, when you rent a home in the city of Dearborn, you know that you have every three years, I believe.
Right.
We we do that. And I agree with you, Mayor. I just want to make sure. I understand that your administration is not doing this. But we're trying to undo years of embedded problems in the building department. And this interval inspection, I see no reason to be on any books whatsoever. There is no advantage. We do not have the right to ask anybody to put in a hood. We do not have a health department that indicates that they can open. That has to happen by Wayne County Health Department. So, my concern is I've seen it. And what happens is when you have a city official come up and say, I think you should do this, even though it's not required by law, then we get into issues with residents, okay? So, I I want to make that clear, Mayor. I have no problem moving this ordinance to make it uniform, but I'd like to hear from my 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 colleagues. And I do think it's a point that we do need to to further because it has never had a systematic process, and I don't believe it's even lawful. Councilman Hamud?
So, respectfully, I'm going to have to disagree with a few of your points.
Okay, no, that's fair.
Just because, and I understand what you're saying. And I think, again, I've been in in public on on my issues with inspections in the city. No offense to Director Hawkins. But the, for example, you know, there's that one woman who like comes in all the time about that car wash up on up on Wyoming, you know? And it's like, without interval inspections, we don't have the tools to to necessarily force that business to actually come up to code. You know, we weren't, we weren't all here when all the CFOs of the city were issued. I don't necessarily agree with several of the CFOs that were issued in the city. Well, actually, some of the items on this agenda today, like the fire watch, are literally items that are directed toward remedying issues that we've had in the past. So, I mean, I I think the key here would be to, you know, goes back to the political accountability of our government. If our if our inspectors and our economic development director are being too heavy-handed on businesses that are, because everything is is open-ended in the law. You're a lawyer. You can utilize the law to do all kinds of things. We have to be fair to our residents, but at the same time, you know, we do, as a government, need to give ourselves the tools in order to ensure compliance with our with our regulations. And I think that's why interval inspections can be a a helpful tool in ensuring, you know, that when people come in and are not necessarily operating in the best interest of the people, whether it be the patrons or the people surrounding their business, that we have the tool in order to remedy that, you know?
I appreciate it. But just so you know, there was no interval inspection on that car wash. The car wash was a reoccupancy and the car wash was violating current codes and laws. Our interval inspection is different. It's totally different. The business at hand was violating laws. In fact, they had, I don't want to get into it, but they had a part that was built without a permit. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Right. So, that has nothing to do with interval inspections. If you build something without a permit, you can you can then seize them at that point for operating as they're not operating with inside the scope.
But just to that point, Council President, sometimes an interval inspection catches that.
Right.
Well, that's true.
You've changed something after you received your CFO.
Yes.
That's, I mean, we we had a family fun appreciation day on Friday. We had a random inspection by Wayne County Public Health Department at the same time of our pool. And so it's not, it's not unlawful. This is something that all levels of government do. And again, we're doing residential and we're also trying to do it. I mean, again, it's not something that my administration created, which is trying to bring uniformity on the pricing so we can justify that. Everybody's being charged the same. But it does protect the residents as well as the employees based on maybe the bad actions of a few. You know, I'm not saying this happens across the board. But for the bad actions of a few, you won't know otherwise.
Well, let me ask you this, Mayor. If that's the case, would you agree that the intervals inspection should have exact specific policies as far as what businesses will be inspected, at what time, or what frequency? Because right now, that doesn't exist.
Absolutely. And I think what we're trying to develop as a department is kind of what is the policy for how we go about, you know? For example, I've been working with Director Tordi to understand how we actually go out and issue notices of violation. I want to understand, is there a map that we follow that says you start here Monday and you kind of work your way from the south to the east to the west? Or one day you have this section of the city, kind of we have eight beats for police officers? Do we have eight beats for inspectors? And so we're actually working through that methodology right now.
Mayor, as you indicated, this is a fee that's in here to be uniformed. I have no problem. But I want to make it abundantly clear, there is absolutely no policy or no systematic way on that a resident or, I'm sorry, business owner can can know when his interval is because it doesn't exist. There's no policy. So, I would, I would hope that you and Mr. Tordi could come up with a systematic, fair method that brings us and limits the scope to things that are in the scope of the city.
Absolutely.
I mean, that that's what I'm concerned because I want you to understand, that is not the way it's being used and it's not, there is no policy on it at this time.
Absolutely.
Councilman Hamud, you had something to finish?
Uh, yeah, just to add, I mean, to the mayor's proposal, if the my colleagues are going to entertain that proposal, I would just also point out, instead of doing across-the-board hundred, I see churches, government buildings, and schools are exempt from charge. I presume we would, okay. All right, I'm just saying we should probably, if you make the motion, because it's your, it's your motion, so they have to.
Yeah, Mr. Clerk, we, I have Councilwoman Burns and Councilwoman Herrick. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does it either, Councilwoman like to amend it to make it uniform as the mayor is indicating?
I'm happy to.
Councilwoman Burns?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I think I had offered the initial item. I'm okay with the amendment. Again, Councilman Hamud noted that schools and churches are not part of that. So, I would just say as long as it's consistent, right, with that under section nine dash four zero, I would be comfortable with that.
Okay. And can we get, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I know Councilwoman Herrick, you have a question on it before you support it. And then we just want to make sure the exact numbers to put in the ordinance. Go ahead. Councilwoman Herrick?
I appreciate inspections that ensure the safety and well-being of residents and patrons and and people that work in the in any kind of business. So, if they're, if this has been working in, if it hasn't been administered fairly in the in the past and consistently in the past, I appreciate that we're making an effort to correct that. I'm disappointed that it's coming to us on the floor at the council meeting. Why didn't this come to us at the at the committee of the whole meeting at the very least last Thursday? Because you're asking us to vote on something that we have read and become familiar with, and now we're making a change to it. And this is not a practice that we should be making.
Thank you for those comments, Councilwoman. I mean, forgive me, I wasn't able to bring it up at the cow. It kind of came up on my table after the cow. But the ordinance itself is not changing with the exception of just that one fee.
And I appreciate that. My and my concern is more that this should not be happening. As far as making the fee consistent, if it's the same inspectors with the same expertise and the same amount of time is taken to do inspections, then it warrants it being the same cost to each business. I just didn't know if perhaps in the past there was a reason for the variations in the in the pricing.
Well, that's a concern. I mean, that's the issue, I think, Councilwoman Herrick, is that they can't determine the fee because they don't know what to inspect. It's whatever they want to do when they go in there. There's no formalized process. And in Mayor, you're absolutely right. This was not under your tenure. This was a tool other the other the the past. And that's what my concern is. And I don't know how you can make a fee when you have no idea what they're going to inspect. And you cannot inspect things that are not under your jurisdiction. And that's, that's, you can't.
Correct. And what we'll do is Director Tordi will take that back. And as we update the org structure and the policies internally.
Appreciate it.
We'll be sure to share that back with council.
Okay, so Councilwoman Herrick, would you like to amend your support to make the uniform amount? And Mayor, you said, so we can.
Just $100, those that are exempt stay exempt.
Yeah, exemptions stay exemptions. And one second, Councilman Herrick. And to make the interval inspection, which we will get, Mr. Tordi, I know you have a lot on your plate, and I know the mayor is, but I think you should immediately let your inspectors know that this is on hold until there's a policy onto what is expected by the business owners as far as interval inspections.
I can do that for sure.
On commercial aspects, residential is separate. Councilwoman Herrick, do you agree with the amendment?
I support it.
So, they do it, I mean, to to support it? Councilman Abraham?
Yeah, I I appreciate all the discussions because it's making me think long and hard about all this. But I understand the uniformity. I understand this tool. My my biggest concern now, after all this dialogue, is really the definition of interval inspection in nine point four oh. To to all the to all the concerns about commercial inspections, when required to be inspected annually for compliance with minimum health, safety, and public welfare requirements, shall be subject to the following fee schedule. I I don't think you can get a legal definition of minimum. I don't think you can get a legal definition of minimum health, safety, and public welfare requirements. I don't even know what that means. I mean, I know in general what it alludes to, but to say I can create a checklist of what a minimum public welfare requirement would be for a barber shop, I don't know where you'd find that in an ordinance or a building code. And so for me, tightening up what the definition of an interval inspection and then associating fees with it, to me, would be equally important. I think we have, I don't think we have, you know, great contention with uniformity in the fees, but knowing what we're actually going to do, I mean, honestly, to send an inspector out according to this ordinance and say, all you can do is look at minimum health, safety, and welfare? I mean, what are you looking at? What are you looking at when you walk in a barber shop for that?
Well, I agree.
And that's the definition for how we charge these fees.
Nine point...
Four oh. It's the same section, it's the heading to this fee schedule.
Okay, no, I agree with you, but I, Mr. Torri, you've been here like eight months, so I'd like to see Mr. Hawkins, because as you indicated, it's a yearly inspection. That's never happened in every year.
No, absolutely not.
Yeah.
Tim Hawkins, Director for DPW and Facilities. To Councilman Abraham's comment, there's a code that has been adopted by city council that's the International Property Maintenance Code. It actually outlines all the health and safety, welfare items. It's a condensed version of the building code, and it's meant to be for buildings that currently exist. So the rehabilitation code is for rehabilitating an old building. The building code is for building a new building. And the International Property Maintenance Code is for just such inspections and definitions. So if I was going to go into a barber shop, I could look in that book, and it would outline like the water system, the tables, the parking, the requirements for, what's a trip hazard? Trip hazards and things coming out of it. Not parking spaces, that's zoning. But like coming in, you know, what is a significant trip hazard, a half inch or more, and height differential, right? Sticking doors, exit signs, emergency lighting. So if I go in and shut the panel off, does the lighting in the building stay on in case of a power outage? Are hallways and stairways lit in such an emergency? Does it require a smoke detector? Does it not? Does it have a fire alarm? Does it have an operating fire alarm? That's not even getting into the fire side, right? With the hood and all the other things. But council has adopted this as one of the books that the building departments to use, and it outlines all of the inspections.
So I know, Councilman Abraham, you have something, just to...
Just real quick?
On that line, if you don't mind, I just wanted to ask some on that line, if you don't mind, Councilman Abraham, I apologize. Mr. Hawkins, how long have you been? I know that you were the current, you were the past director for only a short time, right?
A year and a half.
But you were in the building department for a year?
Five years previous.
Has there ever been an annual inspection used on every business in the city of this?
Absolutely not.
Okay, I just wanted to get that point.
And I agree. And to my further, the reference to, we've done this in other ordinances, if we have a standard, we should reference it in the ordinance. We shouldn't allude to language that I think is very vague, which it literally says minimum health, safety, and welfare requirements. To me, if we have a book and we have a standard and we have a code, we should probably reference it right in the ordinance. If, so people know what they're up against.
I agree. Any other comments or, thank, Mr. August, thank you very much for your insight in the tenure in the past. Councilman Hamud, you have something to add?
Yeah, not to keep mathing this, but so there's like a flat fee pretty much at the big headings, like eighteen, nineteen, twenty. And then there's like a sub-fee that's based on fractional area and stuff. I presume we're changing, like, so for the ones that are very fractional, so like five dollars and two dollars and stuff like that, we're not changing those to a hundred. Are we going to keep those the same?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that they amend the motion, because I don't, because I don't want to, like, for example, like on thirty-five B, plus one thousand square feet thereof, it's ten dollars. If we put that to a hundred, you know, it's a ten times. So I just want to make sure if you would permit that. I'm nitpicking, but I just want to make sure we get it right, you know?
Absolutely. No, I think that makes sense, yes.
Councilwoman Herrick, do you agree with that as well?
Yeah.
So Councilman Hamud, just so we can, for the record, we have the interval inspection fees to be $100 and leave the exempt as well as they were. Mr. Clerk, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay, and then to add, Councilman Hamud, can you indicate what you're saying again regarding this?
So some of the sub-fees under the lettered headings are fractional. So like some of them are not, so like thirteen A, B, C, D, these are not fractional, they're just levels, right? But then some of them are multiplier. So for example, let's say seventeen B plus per room seventy-five. So like those, we wouldn't necessarily increase to a hundred. So like same thing, like if you go to seventeen, the B that's right above it, plus one thousand square feet thereof, it's five. You'd keep that as five, so.
Okay, but are you indicating this as far as interval inspections?
Yeah, I'm talking about the same heading. It's just since we're going to change it across the board, the ones that are multiplier, I would suggest keeping them the same. The ones that are just a flat are the ones that we would change.
All right, let's just make sure. Mayor, is that what you were indicating? Because I thought it was very, very basic on...
It is, there's very few of these. It's a flat fee across, but it's saying for additional thousand feet, thousand square feet, you know, for example, eighteen B, the last, it's five dollars, it's supposed to never, not a hundred, that's what the council is indicating. That's one hundred percent what we are speaking to. I can flag each one for you right now if you like.
So are you indicating that item seventeen, Councilman Hamud, would remain as written and be excluded from interval inspection?
Yeah, basically, actually, because it's already at a hundred, seventeen would actually say exactly the same. But like, let's say, for example, thirty-five is, so like, A would go up to a hundred, B would go up to a hundred, but then this B, the little heading beneath it that's not actually marked, that would stay at ten because it's a multiplier.
Yeah. So I guess...
There you go. Okay.
Quick question.
Councilwoman Burns?
Council President, and a question for Mr. Torri and/or the mayor. How are those fees, and Councilman, I know you were referring to them as fractional, how are those fees categorized? Like, what is that type of fee called? Like, what is the technical term for that so we can put it in, so that we know what we're speaking to accurately?
So we refer to those, I will say, I don't know the exact term of industry, but we refer to those as fractional or incremental fees.
Okay.
So area-based incrementals. So any of those that are, you know, your base fees, from what the mayor's proposing, your base fees would be adjusted. Everything else would be as proposed in the item before you.
Okay, certainly. So then, so then I think we would, if we were to move forward on it, and I think we've had some conversations since Councilwoman Herrick and I said we'd be okay with the change, but it sounds like, just to reiterate, then we would be adjusting the base fee for interval inspections to an even, a uniform one hundred across.
Correct.
And any incremental or fractional?
Yes.
Fees would remain as stated in the original ordinance.
And that would give us enough guidance to make sure we accurately update the fee schedule to your intent.
Right, and we do appreciate...
Thank you, that's helpful. I just wanted to make sure I had that in one fell swoop. You're talking about a lot of different things.
No, no, absolutely, and we don't want to get off track, you're absolutely right. And I want to make sure that Councilwoman Herrick agrees. I do have them circled, so I will provide them to the clerk to simplify for the actual final ordinance that goes through. Councilwoman Herrick, do you have, are you supporting that?
I'm supporting that, yes.
Mr. Clerk, you have that? I'm going to provide them with you. It's a fractional, that will remain the same.
I wrote them down, but yeah.
I'm going to give them to you as well, just to make sure. Councilwoman Herrick? Councilwoman Paris, I apologize.
Thank you, Council President.
Yes.
You know, this has been confusing. We talked about it during the committee of the whole. People out in the audience or at home, they have no idea. You know, just to let you know, under public meetings, this, all the backup materials, and this is thirty-some pages just for this ordinance. That's before us right now. But if I'm correct, we are increasing these fees anyways because it's been so many years anyways, just like what we did with some of the clerk fees, you know, not too many months ago.
Correct.
So that's the reason for doing so. We went so many years at a lower cost, and now bringing it up to go ahead and cover our costs for using our resources, our personnel, our equipment, to go out and do their jobs. So it's not a means of raising revenue just to raise revenue, because hey, it's been a while, we haven't raised revenue, let's do it here. That's not what we're looking at. But a problem that I'm having now is we've gone so many years now before these rates have been raised. The procedure right now is to take from the table for its final reading. And I understand some of the discussion that has taken place right now, but there's a reason why we do that. You know, that we go two different readings, because it gives us time to digest, to look at, to make adjustments, to make potential changes and so on. So for that, right now, I'd recommend putting this on hold again.
Table it.
Table it. Until everything is done, and then on top of that, we would also have a time to fine-tune and come up with some sort of a procedure to make these interval inspections and making absolutely certain that I'm feeling comfortable, let alone possibility for my colleagues, that interval inspections are what we are trying to do and why we're doing them. If we have that procedure, let alone if it's legal or not, I'm taking it that it is because it's in our ordinance, hopefully it is. But just to make these changes...
Just for, just for the record, I apologize, I want to clarify. Maybe Mr. Romer can indicate. Ordinances on them face are not automatically guaranteed as lawful. Is that correct? In fact, the burden, in fact, let me rephrase it. The burden is on the city to show that there's a governmental interest for it, not the burden on the resident. It's the opposite, because that's the ordinance level. Is that correct, Mr. Romer?
Yeah, I would tell you municipalities somewhat pass ordinances routinely that can be deemed unconstitutional. It's not on purpose, but it can happen.
Right.
The only thing that I want to bring up is myself, I'm not comfortable going forward that why can't we delay this? So there's no confusion. We all understand it from the administration, from the council, and we go forward with something that is before us that we can work with.
Right. Your points are well taken. Mayor, would you like to respond?
Yes, certainly. I understand the councilman's concerns. You know, I was a legislator for five years, and I know what it means to amend legislation on the House floor before you get it across. It's why you have two readings, it's a part of the process. Sometimes things exit a committee meeting, you still get amended in the House floor before it actually goes up for a vote. Again, this is not something we're doing frequently. The only thing we're amending is making a uniform fee for inspections. And it is documented what these inspections are, as spoken to Director Hawkins. As by a previous ordinance that's been passed by council. There's a book that is established for the types of inspections that occur, and all you want to do is for uniformity. I understand the councilman's suggestion for wanting to postpone. I would disagree as a city in order for us to just get things executed and in place, because we've been working on this for a long time now. And I would hate to do it, to change it, because, you know, I had this last-minute adjustment at the council meeting. So forgive me for that last-minute meeting, but I'm comfortable still moving forward because I just adjusted to bring uniformity on one fee in the whole document. But I still think we have agreement about ninety-nine percent of the ordinance that's before us.
One more.
And I would hate for that one percent to push us back.
Mayor, we understand it's a work of progress, I understand fully. And like you said, I made very clear my standing on that interval inspection aspect. And we understand that our ordinances fees have not been updated in many, many, many years. It started with us tasking the clerk, and I'd like to thank him for his diligence. It took several readings to get through, but we are, as the Councilwoman Paris has indicated, this is not to make money. But you cannot send an inspector out for five dollars, and we have ordinances that were doing that. So I, I'm glad that you did do this and bring it forward. And I understand Councilwoman Paris's hesitation with it, it's warranted. But when you look at the big picture, I think there's enough here to complete and come back and visit on issues because we are building, there is, there is people that are coming in, and these fees are way out of whack. I know, Councilman Hamud, did you still have something?
I have.
Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. I agree with Councilwoman Abraham that the description at the beginning of section nine dash forty should be clarified to include the definition, if we're using the International Property Maintenance Code, so that anybody reading this knows that that's what we're asking these businesses to adhere to when they're being inspected. So it's not just a matter of changing the, each of these fees to a hundred dollars, except for the ones we're not. It's, we're also talking about clarifying in the definition. So going beyond what initially we were talking about changing. I would like to see how that's written, if that's what we're going to do, rather than pass an ordinance right now and then two weeks from now, having to bring it back up in four weeks from now, going through two readings and then passing with the information that we're saying should be included. Can we make the changes now and do a reading and pass it at our next council meeting in two weeks?
Mr. Romer?
Well, the one comment I would make that by tabling, this is your current ordinance. So if you table it, this is the current ordinance they're tasked with enforcing. So tabling it does nothing as far as cleaning up the language in the section that you are thinking about addressing at a later point. This revision is purely from a monetary fee standpoint. So if your goal is to revise or clarify that section, tabling does nothing here. We would need to go back and bring another revision before you. Otherwise, they're going to be enforcing this provision as it sits today.
And if I may add one more comment.
Yes, Mayor.
And Councilwoman Paris touched on this. The original intent was the economic development drew not only from the general fund, but also from a fund of sources called CDBG dollars.
Right.
These dollars are given to us by HUD from the federal government. The intent of these dollars is to improve the quality of life for folks who reside basically east of Greenfield Road as the cutoff. In my conversation with the, one of the federal administrators, as well as the state director, one thing that is frowned upon is using these CDBG dollars to pay for staff, because it's very hard to then allocate time of a staff or personnel that's being spent on one side of town. And so with the fee schedule moving forward, what we also do is bring ourselves in line with other municipalities that don't utilize CDBG dollars for the purposes of funding staff, which has been a precedent that's occurred previously, that we're trying to exit from under this administration, and actually fulfill the true purpose of CDBG dollars, which is to do things like improve the parks, improve streets, improve walkways and biking pathways, and launching programs to help improve quality of life for those without the economic means to do so. And so that's another advantage for moving this in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other points from my colleagues? Okay, Mr. Torri, I do appreciate it.
Sure.
I know that you've been here a few short months, and you're doing a wonderful job. I know you have a task with a very large department, and I know that you're also understaffed administratively. So we do appreciate it, and it's okay, you know, I don't want you to be mad.
No, no. I don't want you guys to be mad, I want to keep employed, so just let me know what you need.
All right. Councilman Hamud, you have something?
So if my colleagues want to have, like, have an issue with a specific issue of the nine four zero interval inspection, can I make a motion to split the question to everything else and then just pull the interval inspection part out? If that's what, if you guys want to revisit that at a later date?
Okay. Mr. Romer, can we, can we split an ordinance? It will stand on its own by removing one section? I would think it would.
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, it would, but it effectively just keeps it status quo, which is what the ordinance is today.
Oh, I understand that.
Okay.
I don't necessarily...
It wouldn't be doing anything.
I'm just trying, I think, to make it more easy for everybody to agree with the things, because everything else has been here for weeks.
Right.
So everything else has been in there, and everyone's had time to review it. You all had the time to put in your options. If we have an issue with nine four zero, which, I mean, like the administration says, is written the way it is right now anyway, if you guys would like to revisit it later, I'll make a motion to split the question. So nine four zero would be one, and then the rest of the ordinance would be another question, so.
Okay, Mr. Romer, so procedurally, he made a motion, we have to get a support, and then we have to rule, we have to rule, vote on that.
By a majority.
By a majority, so if you'd like to split the question. Councilwoman Herrick, do you have something to add?
Well, I have a question on this. So if we proceed without splitting it and go ahead and agree to the one hundred dollars for each type of inspection, could we then, we could then bring the ordinance up again in a couple of weeks and again vote to change the language that we're talking about changing in a separate vote?
Correct.
After passing this tonight.
Mr. Romer?
Yeah, that was to my point. This is fees before you. If you want to change the substance of the ordinance, yeah, that can always be done at another...
It is just fees.
Okay, I, yeah.
I agree.
I'd rather just proceed then, yeah.
Okay, well then, I'm waiting for a second. If I don't get a second, then the motion dies.
Okay. Yeah, for me personally, I have full confidence in Director Torri understanding where I'm at and the mayor understanding that what this was used before. And the director, who was the previous director in his years of experience, said that this was never done annually. And it wasn't used the way it was supposed to be used. So I have full confidence that you're going to do it. I do want to revisit it in the future, but I have no problem going forward now because I do believe the permit fees need to be in line with the actual service cost. And I appreciate you working on that, because it's like, like Councilwoman Paris said, this is not to make money. We have to, we cannot send an inspector out on the road for a fee for five dollars. So we do have to make changes, so. I am, I'm good with going through as it is.
All right, no problem.
Okay, so the motion to split the questions when we're drawn by Councilman Hamud?
Is it a good idea?
Yeah, no, I do appreciate it. All right, any other questions or, Mr. Clerk, I don't know if you didn't have a final reading, is that correct?
I have not had a final reading.
Mr. Torri, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, having no other questions on this item, Mr. Torri, can, Mr. Clerk, can you please give us the final reading?
Yes, this is the final reading of ordinance number two two dash one seven six eight entitled an ordinance to amend the fees for permits and inspection chapter, chapter nine of the city of Dearborn by amending the economic development rates, section nine dash three through nine dash four hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Council President Serenius.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
No.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Five yeas, the ordinance passes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item forty-nine, ordinance number two two dash one six nine introduced by Councilmember Hamud, synopsis and ordinance to amend the community development chapter, chapter seven of the city of Dearborn by amending article two A, section seven dash thirty-six entitled functions and duties.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, the unanimous roll will be attached, take to the table. Is this for the first reading?
Yes.
First reading, okay. The proposed amendments would remove positions, provisions related to design review committee from the code ordinances to be consistent with the request, requested changes to our zoning ordinance. The proposed amendment would remove the required $150 fee from the design review committee cases. All proposed projects within the downtown business district would still remain, still be reviewed by our relevant city staff for consistency with zoning ordinances and our local, local reserve regulations. This is the first of two readings, are there any questions or concerns on this item?
I'll just comment.
Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, so the, so this is an example of economic development removing kind of redundant red tape in our city code and kind of design and permitting for business districts. So this actually used to be in, in or, it used to actually also do the West Dearborn DDA, I think, and then that kind of got superseded by the actual DDA, and then this was just another committee that any business owner modifying literally anything in, on the outside of their building in East Dearborn Business District would have had to go through, so. And, and then funny enough, it was, it was kind of like a redundant committee because it just was literally a bunch of staff from the city, and then they would have to go through another committee through planning anyway. So this is an example of trying to streamline things to get it moving for business owners and put them, they're less of a ringer when, when they have to deal with the city. So I think this was a smart move on the part of the ED department, so I appreciate this.
Thank you, Councilman Hamud, appreciate it. Any one else from the council that'd speak on this item? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have its first reading, please?
This is the first reading of ordinance number two two dash one seven six nine entitled an ordinance to amend the community development chapter, chapter seven of the city of Dearborn by amending article two A, section seven dash thirty-six entitled functions and duties, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Abraham to table the ordinance.
Okay, and unanimous roll will be attached, table and ordinance, next item, please.
Item fifty, ordinance number two two dash one seven seven zero introduced by councilmember Herrick, synopsis and ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Dearborn by amending section seventeen point zero six, seventeen point zero nine, seventeen point ten, and seventeen point twelve of article seventeen point zero zero entitled BD Downtown Business Districts.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and you don't need to table, nothing on there. Okay, so this is another ordinance cleanup. This has the design review committee located on projects in the downtown district and East Dearborn district, but they lack the authority to grant variances or designs, and they also lack the legal authority that is required to do anything other than was already in the ordinance. So this is removing the requirement of the DRC to, to approve projects and eliminate unnecessary red tape. This is the, recommended by the planning commission and is the first of two readings. Can we have the first reading, Mr. Clerk?
This is the first reading of ordinance number two two dash one seven seven zero entitled an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Dearborn by amending section seventeen point zero six, seventeen point zero nine, seventeen point ten, and seventeen point twelve of article seventeen point zero zero entitled BD Downtown Business District, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Burns to table the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and unanimous roll will be attached unless hearing any objections. Hearing none, so it's attached, next item, please.
Item fifty-one, ordinance number two two dash one seven seven one introduced by councilmember Burns, synopsis and ordinance to adapt chapter nineteen, article six, sections nineteen through two hundred and eight to nineteen, two hundred and twenty-seven of the code of ordinances of the city of Dearborn entitled stormwater management.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and the proposed ordinance regulates non-stormwater discharges to the city's storm drainage system and is required as part of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, or NPDES, which is overseen by the Michigan Department of Environmental Great Lakes and Energy, which is now called Eagle. The proposed ordinance applies to new developments and redevelopments of a certain size that discharge into the city's municipal, municipality to separate stormwater system under MS four and require that they submit plans that comply with minimum requirements for controlling stormwater runoff and water quality. Violation of this ordinance is punishable by a civil infraction and a fine of up to $2,500. This is the first of two readings. Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number two two dash one seven seven six entitled an ordinance to adapt chapter nineteen, article six, sections nineteen dash two oh eight to nineteen dash two twenty-seven of the code of ordinances of the city of Dearborn entitled stormwater management, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Herrick to table the ordinance.
Okay, and the unanimous roll will be attached unless hearing no objections, so it's attached. Next item, please.
Item fifty-two, ordinance number two two dash one seven seven two introduced by councilmembers Burn, councilmember Burns, synopsis and ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Dearborn by amending section seven point zero two of article seventeen point zero zero entitled site development standards applicable to specific uses.
All right, again, this is just a companion piece, as you're seeing throughout our ordinances, we're trying to clean them up. This is a companion piece to item fifty that deals with the design review committee, which has been eliminated in section seven point oh two and of article seven point oh. This is the first of two readings, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number two two dash one seven seven two entitled an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Dearborn by amending section seven point zero two and article seventeen point zero zero entitled site development standards applicable to specific uses, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Abraham to table the ordinance.
Okay, and the unanimous roll will be attached unless hearing any objections, so it's attached, next item, please.
Item fifty-three, ordinance number two two dash one seven seven three introduced by councilmember Hamud, synopsis and ordinance to amend the fees for permits and inspections chapter, chapter nine of the code of ordinances of the city of Dearborn by amending article two, section nine dash eight three entitled functions and duties.
Okay, and then this is another proposed amendment to clean up language that to remove provisions related to the design review committee from the code ordinances to be consistent with, which is requested on our zoning ordinances. The proposed amendment would remove the required $150 fee from the design committee review cases. Again, all proposed projects within the downtown business district will still be reviewed by relevant city staff for consistency with zoning ordinances and local regulations. This is a first of two readings, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number two two dash one seven seven three entitled an ordinance to amend the fees for permits and inspections chapter, chapter nine of the code of ordinances of the city of Dearborn by amending article two, section nine dash eighty-three entitled functions and duties, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Abraham to table the ordinance.
Okay, and unanimous roll will be attached unless hearing any objections, hearing none, so it's attached. Next item, please.
Item fifty-four, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Herrick awarding a sole source purchase to M-Tech Company in the amount of $320,980 for a global M4 mechanical street sweeper and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, and the new 2022 global M4 mechanical street sweeper will replace a 2017 gobbler sweeper and will be used to sweep streets throughout our city. The old unit will be put up for auction and sold throughout the standard disposition process. The requested amount is $320,980 and is being requested immediate effect. I do have some question, I think we had some questions at the committee of the whole. Director Hawkins?
Good evening.
Thank you, yeah.
So the questions that we asked were, how much does it cost to replace sweeper brushes? So we reached out to M-Tech. Sweeper brushes right now, for the gutter brush is $157 for the broom, and for the center broom, it's $379. The gutter brushes last about 50 running hours, and then the center brushes last about 100 running hours.
Thank you, Travis.
Any questions on that one?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
The question for me was more consistent, as you've been there, the issue is happening, this unit is only, is only from 2017, and I'm all for street sweeping because the plan is always to try to do eight runs a year.
Correct.
Problem, I understand that we had machines being cannibalized to repair other machines because of the supply chain issue, but my concern was, is that we didn't get, in the same situation we were before, is that the brushes were exclusive and were kind of like, you weren't here at the committee of the whole, when you buy the printer, it's real cheap and then the ink is outrageous and you got to buy that ink and nothing else?
Correct.
So my concern is if the brushes were in line with the standard costs throughout the industry, that's all I concern.
So what we did is we compared them, so standard cost is $33 a section, and there's eight sections required for the gutter. So when you figure that out, M-Tech is charging us less.
Okay.
The standard, when you go on for one that's universal, for the center brush is $35 a section, and there's 13 sections for that. So M-Tech is also charging us less on that as well.
Excellent. Okay, that's what our concern was, and not only did the sweeper was being retired so early, but also the cost of ongoing maintenance, because it is a big benefit to our residents and they do look for the street sweepers.
It is, it is, and we do apologize about the shortfalls with the sweepers this year. It's just been difficult getting parts for our equipment.
Right. No, I understand, we do appreciate it, and we do know the supply chain has been very strapped throughout the industry, I mean, everything has, has been that way, but we do appreciate you bringing this forward to us. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. May I ask then, as far as the street sweepers, the maintenance on them, are we doing this in-house from central garage, or does that street sweeper have to be taken elsewhere?
We, we, our plan is to do it at central garage. Currently, we have some staffing issues, but most of the maintenance on a street sweeper is changed by our maintenance mechanics. So we have three maintenance mechanics in the highways division that can change brushes, fix the vacuum unit or the elevator unit in these ones, some of them minor repairs. Changing brushes is really fairly simple, a few bolts and the brushes drop out. The central garage typically does like the more invasive. We had one that the exhaust system failed on it, so we had to order through M-Tech an exhaust system. Central garage does repairs like that.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hamud?
So you weren't here at the committee of the whole, which was lucky for you, but I, I had a variety of issues with this item, and I mean, so we did pass, people don't know this necessarily unless they read the agenda in detail, but we did pass a requisition for additional parts for these street sweepers.
Correct.
And that's because, you know, and I didn't have an issue with that because I understand we own a fleet of these, something like, I was going to say eight, but yeah, seven of them.
Right.
That, that are currently in operation, and then by the time spring hit, you know, the only three were in operation at some point. I walked through highway division by coincidence, and I was like kind of in shock by that, you know, this was the beginning of the season. And I understand the concerns of, you know, oh, we have diesel after treatment, we don't know why these systems aren't working and things like that, and just having experience working in diesel after treatment specifically, my thing is, you know, I guess twofold. One, have, have we assessed competitors for these vehicles to see if we necessarily have the best fleet before we go out and continue to purchase these fleets of vehicles?
I don't know if it was done before, well, I did not do it before this request, but I did after this was requested on Thursday.
Right. Because I think I asked that question.
Right. What I spoke to, what I come to find out was, these units are an elevator unit, not a vacuum unit. We ran vacuum units in the past.
Right.
That is the standardized unit across most other brands, which actually pulls it up like a vacuum cleaner. This has an elevator, so as it sweeps, there's actually a mechanical belt that draws it up into the machine.
Right.
The, the failure rate is way less with this machine for us as an elevator machine than the vacuum unit. Less clogs, less sticks, less jams, less things in it. The other thing is, this machine fully tilts out so we can wash the inside of the compartment out every day, where the other units are like, more like a vacuum unit where you open the door, you pull all this stuff out.
It's a bag.
I wish it had a bag.
It's all the time exploding.
Yeah, but, so after calling around and talking to our maintenance mechanics who make the repairs, they said that this was the most functional unit that they've seen, and we've had three different kinds throughout the years.
So I guess what I'd want to understand is, then clearly we have an issue of maintenance because how can we be, how can more than 50% of our fleet be down at the beginning of the season?
That was a lack of parts ordering and pre-ordering. So one of the things that I found is we were not ordering for like the physical year ahead. We do not stock parts. We used to stock parts, but we have not in the, you know, in the last few, or past. Now that's what we're coming to and requesting this additional money. I would like to buy enough brushes to get us all the way till May, right, to have them on hand for equipment.
So that was another item. In this item, you're requesting the purchase of a brand new.
A brand new sweeper, but you asked about the maintenance side of it, and it's because we did not order the parts and have them on stock.
So the, the other item that we already approved today does have future looking parts?
Yes, we purchased parts for them, that's why the standardized fleet's so important.
Okay.
So I can order a pallet of brushes, inside and curb brushes, right, and we can have them on hand. Some of the other failures are unforeseen, there was electrical failure in one that M-Tech came out and addressed. And the exhaust, maybe we didn't run it correctly.
Yeah, several of them, yeah.
Maybe there was an issue with our maintenance, but there was about two months back order on getting that exhaust.
Right, so my issue with that is, what I, what I want to hear from your department is, we are going to look into the maintenance and we are going to create an appropriate schedule and ensure that we're operating the vehicles within operational parameters for a depth system, and ensure that we're running them at the right idle speeds and things like that, you know?
I, I think what we need to do is have M-Tech come out and speak with our maintenance mechanics to ensure.
If that's what it takes.
That, that we're following the maintenance schedule.
Yes, because, because having a, having a fleet out where, I think at least three of them, where just because, oh, they're diesels, we don't know how to operate them, that's not acceptable to me personally, because I, I work on diesels, I work on gas, I work on electric, I, I know all the failure modes of all these, and, and sometimes it comes down to a proper maintenance schedule. That's why I got really unhappy about this. So I, I, I hope you guys are looking into that.
We will.
All right.
And just to clarify.
Yes, Mayor.
Director, can you speak to why we're replacing the one that we're replacing?
So the one we're replacing is actually a parking lot sweeper. At some point, we thought that it would be a good idea to buy a smaller three-wheeled unit and to navigate the parking lots and sweep them. The issue that we had is we do not leave it at a stationary garage near a parking lot. So we actually had injuries while driving it. This thing bounces like no other in this three-wheel design, and there was injuries occurred, people went on medical. It is meant to be in a parking lot, like a parking structure or stadium lot, where it's in a garage, it drives across the street and it maneuvers. It is not meant to drive from our DPW yard to Gully Road, and that is the miscalculation. It's just too far to travel in that unit, and so we're going to replace it with one that is designed for what we use it for.
And we'll be auctioning off the one that we currently have.
Correct.
To upgrade to a one that's more universal use.
Appreciate it. Director Hawkins, just for myself, when you indicated about the lever and all this, when I hear that, you know, I'm not a mechanic, but more parts, more problems, are you saying that there's no vacuum system on this, or there is, it's just like?
There is, but it's, the large debris is picked up on the conveyor, and that is the difference. On the other units that we had purchased, it is literally a ten-inch tube that sucks up the debris as it goes down the road.
Right.
So all it takes is a bushy limb to suck up into it. That unit's down, we're gonna drive back to the yard, have to take it apart. With the elevator, it is sweeping everything to the center and then using that elevator to take all the brush and pop cans and water bottles and everything and put that into the truck. And then on the outside, it spins back through and there is suction.
Right.
But it's meant for small debris.
Appreciate it. So for this unit right here, this item, this is the first one of this kind on our fleet or no?
No, we have seven others.
We have seven now, so the Elgin ones are not?
So the Elgin ones were a vacuum style and that was one of the ones we had trouble with.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thanks for the information, Councilman Hamud. Do you have anything to wrap up?
Just a comment from the cow was, this was gonna be a parking lot sweeper. It is within the spec of a highway and like street level sweeper, so it's not a small unit that we're purchasing. We're actually purchasing a unit that could be used anywhere in the city, which is actually smart.
You're replacing the parking lot.
You're replacing the parking lot, yeah, but they said they were replacing it with another one and that didn't-
I apologize if that was said. The idea is to get rid of the parking lot sweeper style and have one that's over the road.
Yeah, and this is smart because it's consistent with the rest of them, yeah. Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much, we appreciate it because we don't, I think Councilman Hamud made a good point, I mean, we don't want everything down and I'm sure you don't either.
I do not.
So I do appreciate that and thanks for the information and your deputy director, Nicole Golich, has done a tremendous job at the committee of the whole.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item fifty-five, resolution by council members Paris and Herrick, awarding a cooperative contract purchase to Wolverine Freightliner in the amount of four hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars for four Freightliner chassis and truck and trailer specialties in the amount of one million, fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and five dollars for the upfitting of those chassis. Also authorizing the finance director to appropriate funds in the total amount of four hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. And this request is to purchase, as the clerk indicated, four Wolverine twenty-twenty-four Freightliner chassis that will be outfitted to Freightliners through truck and trailer specialties, which include four swap loader hoods, forklifts, and four skid-mounted cry steel, fourteen-inch stainless steel dump bodies, and one skid-mounted flatbed rack body with a beaver tail?
Yeah.
Might have to get an explanation on that one here then. I'll just joke, I'll, I'll read the rest off.
Go ahead.
The four Freightliners will have a hook lift and interchangeable bodies that will be more versatile. The four new frontliners will replace one chipper box and four tandem axle dump trucks. The purchase of these new Freightliners will enable DPW employees to better perform their services that we provide at the city of Dearborn for the residents. So Director Hawkins, would you like to speak on it before we appropriate the money?
This is kind of falling into the new DPW vision of having all of our vehicles capable all year long. We have a fleet of salt trucks, tandem axle trucks that are rarely used through the summer months for anything. So the hook lift truck is actually a truck that the bed itself can be set on the ground, another box is picked up by that truck, put on. So when we need chipper trucks, we're talking about taking back tree contracts, right?
For the stumps? It's for the stumps, the granite stumps?
This is for, for chipping the trees, but you could use it for anything you want. That's the nice part about this hook lift. So what we've ordered are the four salt beds to make them dump trucks, right? With the spreaders. So when spring comes, we set those on the ground and then we can pick up two different chipper boxes. So now two crews go out to trim trees and all the wood chips can go into that same truck and be hauled back safely because it's covered. We have our new grass parks division, they're cutting grass. That beaver tail flatbed is literally a trailer that sits on the ground, the hook lift picks it up, you can load all your mowers on it, puts them right up on top of the truck and off you go. We could go to any park you want.
Yeah, that's excellent. Well, we, we do, we do appreciate that because I know under the new administration, I think everyone was invited and I know most of us did go through the yard and you're absolutely right, there's equipment that's not being used.
Right.
This is, for these chassis and upload, and upload, upfitting is one point, one million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, so we do appreciate it and, and we do appreciate the synergy. I was unaware that these chassis are interchangeable like that as, until this item came forward. It's very useful and we do appreciate it. And as far as the trees, we are a tree city and, and Director Hawkins, you've been out to homeowner associations with myself, where if, if you do not, if we do not do our maintenance, it's gonna cause significant damage and cost to our taxpayers. So we do appreciate it and I, hopefully, we will get the tree contracts being fulfilled. We know that's been a sore spot through the council and hopefully we can bring it in-house because we do have a lot of maintenance that needs to be done for a truth.
And there's quite a few other things you could do with these hook lifts, like if we purchased our own dumpsters, we could deliver dumpsters, roll-off boxes, they'll pick them up, they'll deliver, if the police department got a, a command post or a command center, we could deliver that. I mean, all of these trucks and all four of them do the same thing. Eventually, then it would be nice, is to have our entire fleet altered to this over the course of many years and then they would be versatile for any department, right? I mean, the water department could have a box that's picked up that has everything they need to do, lead line replacements.
Right.
Each division, it would really cut down on the number of trucks that we require. And the other thing is, if you look, it's, we're looking at twenty-twenty-four.
No, we do know it's, it's a long-
It's a long time to get a vehicle.
No, we understand, we do appreciate it. Thank you very much, Director Hawkins. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, thank you, Director Hawkins. The request, the request amount for both the chassis and the upfitting, as I indicated, is one million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and immediate effect is requested for the timing of this item. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item fifty-six, resolution by council members Herrick and Hamud, awarding a cooperative contract purchase to Lenco in the amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars for a Lenco emergency response vehicle for the police and fire departments and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The police and fire departments are seeking to purchase a Lenco Medica Cat version emergency response vehicle, which will replace our current nineteen-eighty-three Dodge emergency vehicle that is still in service. The police department and fire department have been awarded three hundred thousand dollars for this purchase via a community development block grant or CBG grant funds from HUD. Immediate effect is requested as it takes several months to order, build the vehicle and train and familiarize staff regarding what is required to use this unit for both departments. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to thank Police Chief Shaheen and the police department for providing the details that I asked for on Thursday. I asked how often the previous similar piece of equipment was used and it, fortunately, there aren't that many situations that are so dire that we need a piece of heavy equipment of this size and caliber. However, when it is used, it protects the lives of police officers, first responders, and the public and it can be used to assist in rescue situations as well as, you know, providing safety. So I appreciate the information that you shared with me and I appreciate also that we have a grant that's paying for this.
Excellent, thank you very much, Councilwoman. Any other questions or comments on this item?
If I may, Council President?
Yes, ma'am.
The one comment I would make is that rather than just replace to a similar vehicle, this one is far more versatile. And so in the instance where we have a flooding situation like we experienced last year back in fourteen or seventeen, this vehicle can actually sustain and drive through high waters as well, which we currently don't have a vehicle that can do that. And then it can also be used interchangeably between police and fire. And so there's, in the back, you can actually have an EMS station within the vehicle itself, which can also be supportive. So just, it's, it's far more versatile than existing one, but just wanted to add to your comments.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We do appreciate it, thank you, Chief Shaheen. Councilwoman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. What I do want to tell the public, this is not a SWAT truck. You're thinking about militaristic police with equipment that you're responding in a military fashion. I'm just gonna get that right out there. If you take the description of this vehicle and you actually go on the website for this vehicle, it's interchangeable for all sorts of situations and as the mayor alluded to, there's actually pictures of it going through high water. This is a rescue vehicle that will do so much for both police and fire. It is not a SWAT militaristic vehicle. And I'm gonna go back in time, nineteen-eighty-three had a few years on the police department back then and I remember what a big deal it was to get that nineteen-eighty-three vehicle. And here we are, almost forty years later, getting something that's actually going to be much more useful than what it was even back then in nineteen-eighty-three. So I appreciate that and thank you again, Chief Shaheen, for bringing that forward. And I appreciate the comments that Councilwoman Herrick had and some of the questions that she raised that you provided answers to. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Paris, for that aspect of what the vehicle is. We do appreciate it and since it's been forty years, maybe, Chief Shaheen, we should have him have the first ride.
No problem.
All right. All right, hearing and seeing, no objections, unanimous roll will be attached to this item. Next item, please.
Item fifty-seven, resolution by council members Hamud and Herrick, awarding a contract to OHM Advisors in the amount of nine hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars for a term of two years for until the completion of the RFP project for hydraulic and hydrological evaluation of the city's storm, storm sewers, combined sewers, and sanitary sewers. Also authorizing the finance director to appropriate funds in the amount of five hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The city has experienced multiple floods in the nineteen-eighties and has encountered a number of flood issues in recent years, as far back as two thousand and ten, eleven, fourteen, and eighteen, as well as the massive floods in twenty-twenty-one, in which devastated our residents and basements. As many people are aware, the council has been working along with the administration to create this RFP or cross for bid to do a comprehensive study on what we can do to better serve our residents and avoid the flooding in our residential areas. We also have a design evaluation team in which I had appointed Councilman Hamud from our council to sit on that evaluation team with the finance department and recommend that this contract to OHM Advisors for hydraulic and, and services regarding the city's storm war, storm system water and combined sewer and sanitary sewers. The contract will be valid for two years or throughout the successful completion if it's sooner. Funding for the study is requested from two sources, there's four hundred and two thousand, seven hundred dollars that was built into our twenty-twenty-three sewer fund, operating budget and sewer rates. And it, there's also being requested that the finance director authorize and appropriate five hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars from the general fund and a contribution to the sewer fund. It should be noted that an additional two point one million dollars in shared state revenue from constitutional sales tax for twenty-twenty-two is being requested in a, in a separate council request and that this request authorizes, you know, the award, and award immediate effect to order and facilitate the timely execution of this contract to start the services as soon as possible. The resulting contract, of course, will not be bounded until it's fully executed. Any questions or comments on the sewer study? Mayor?
Mayor, go first.
Yeah, Mayor.
Thank you so much. So this is the long-awaited evaluation of our water and sewer system as a, as a city. I know this has been asked for by some council members for several years. When we came in, we made it a priority. We took the request for proposal that was drafted, we modified it within my administration. We wanted to make sure that we did more than just evaluate our water and sewer system. We wanted to take it to the next step. We also wanted to begin the planning of the full greening of the city of Dearborn. How do we incorporate green infrastructure practices throughout our city to start modernizing our infrastructure and more than just telling us what's wrong with our current water, our current water and sewer system? So we had a robust panel that evaluated all the bids that came in and selected this specific company, OHM. The, the staff of this vendor is, is top-notch. They have connections throughout the federal government as well. Some of the members sit on the EPA board for the federal government and they also have a grant manager arm. And so in addition to assisting us with the full study and the evaluation of our system, they will also be assisting us with seeking additional federal dollars that we can draw down to help us improve and upgrade our infrastructure as a city. And lastly, had a robust component to also reaching out to the community throughout this process to make sure that the community is informed and engaged, which we thought was extremely important for such an important topic that many residents have been asking for, obviously, since the devastating floods that occurred last summer. So just wanted at least to give just some of that commentary.
Appreciate that, Mayor, thank you. Councilman Hamud?
So I think as many residents, including myself, know, the city of Dearborn has been facing severe flooding events and issues in regards to flooding in people's basements especially and our roads for, for decades now, you know? And, and we've discussed this at council meetings, we've discussed this out in, in public and I think now we're, we're kind of getting to a point where we, we are willing as a city to recognize that issue and, and start to begin to remedy that, you know? And I think the, the big thing that I really appreciated about the proposal that we received back from OHM and that the city prioritized as an administration was the transparency of the investigation. So there will be a, a public engagement component to this that was part of the RFP. I think you guys are gonna see as, as this starts to roll out, you know, there's gonna be more city communications on, on how the public can participate in this because feedback is gonna be part of it, right? And, and at the end, I think the goal is going to be to, you know, figure out exactly what kind of requirements we want to be durable to in terms of rainwater events and, and find the most, the most cost-effective solution for city taxpayers that we can implement within a reasonable amount of time to try and get relief to many residents, including myself, as soon as possible. So, you know, I'm, I'm really happy about this. I think the community did a great job between our, our DPW department and purchasing and interviewing the, the companies and, you know, I, I look forward to seeing what the outcomes of this investigation are.
Thank you, Councilman Hamud. Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you, Council President. I'd also like to say I'm very glad to see this coming forward. My appreciation to the administration, the review committee, including Councilmember Hamud. I know that this took a tremendous amount of work and heart to bring this forward. I appreciate the focus on equity and community engagement and also the greening aspect of it. We know that climate change is real and we know that the impacts of climate change will continue to reveal themselves as time moves forward. And I think that the focus on, you know, on greening the city of Dearborn as part of this RFP and part of this planning process will help situate Dearborn as a leader, really in the state of Michigan, if not beyond, in how to prepare for those impacts and also to help mitigate them, which I think is critically important. So very happy to see that and looking forward to good things to come.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burns. Just to, to touch that, finalize on this, there was five bidders for this, so I do appreciate the amount of work and I do appreciate the mayor's vision of including green infrastructure. I think the biggest takeback is, that I said throughout my tenure in the past and through now is that water mitigation is not something new in the world and moving water away is, is something that we can do. And this is the first step and we do appreciate the time it's gonna take, but it's gonna give us a plan and without having a plan, we're gonna be in the same situation we were in the past. We do believe that this is the best interest for this, for our residents and I look forward to seeing the outcome of it. Hearing and seeing, no other comments or questions on this item? Unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item fifty-eight, resolution by council members Burns and Paris, awarding a contract to CHOP for a one-year period in the amount of six hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars for tree trimming in the city easement, also authorizing the finance director to appropriate funds in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you. And this is the request, an award, I'm sorry, request to award a contract to CHOP for finishing our Monday section of our tree trimming, which was previously bid out for a different vendor that was unable to complete and also completing Tuesday's section as well. CHOP was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and at this time, it is being requested that the finance director authorize and appropriate one hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars from our general fund balance to cover these costs. The total contract award is again six hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and immediate effect is being requested so that the trimming can be done before the fall and winter season. Any questions or comments on this item?
Our hope is once we're staffed up and have the appropriate equipment, that this contract will be fully absorbed internally. We wanna insource this contract.
No, we do appreciate it, Mayor. I know that's the ultimate goal and I know that was tasked even on this item and that your department went back to see what they could do.
Correct.
And just not in the, we just don't have the, the equipment at this time, but we do appreciate it and, and we know that it will happen hopefully soon as we continue to go, but we do need to get this done, so we do appreciate it. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item fifty-nine, resolution by council members Herrick and Burns, acknowledging the receipt of a donation in the amount of one thousand dollars for Margaret Wade to the Dearborn Public Library, also authorizing the finance director to recognize and deposit the donation in the library donation account and appropriate the same amount to the account for contracted services for youth programs.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Margaret Wade is a longtime Dearborn Public Library patron and has been donating to the Dearborn Library since at least two thousand and eight. The council has acknowledged, deposited, and appropriated Margaret Wade's donation annually. The donation increases youth programming at Esper Branch Library. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none? Does anybody have to speak on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item sixty, resolution by council members Herrick and Paris, authorizing the finance director to recognize state shared revenue budget in the approximate amount of two million, one hundred thousand dollars with the actual amount recognized once payment is received and requesting immediate effect.
All right, this is good news, folks. So the twenty-twenty-two adjusted budget includes state shared revenues from the twenty-twenty census adjustment that was released in April of twenty-twenty-two. However, it does not include the additional revenue that has been received due to an increase in amount of sales tax being collected by the state of Michigan. Our revenue sharing increased by two million, two million, one hundred thousand dollars into our general fund. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item sixty-one, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Burns, approving the purchase of five-one-two-five Wyoming, five-zero-six-three Wyoming, Wyoming Lunch, five-zero-five-five Wyoming, and five-zero-four-five Wyoming in the total amount of six hundred forty-five thousand dollars, subject to certain stipulations and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The city has the opportunity to purchase these listed properties at six hundred forty-five thousand. The city has been attempting to acquire these lots in two thousand and thirteen because the lots are adjacent to already city-owned lots that have frontage on Wyoming and because the city has been purchasing the land bank throughout Eugene, Port area for decades. It is crucial that the city obtain these lots so they are not sold to another buyer. Acquiring these properties is a vision, is for future development. The assessor has opinion that the current value of these are approximately five hundred eighty-five thousand. Closing will take place within ninety days of city council approval. Any questions or comments on these parcels? Okay, hearing, seeing, none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item sixty-two, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Burns, approving the request of the Museum Guild of Dearborn to close and use the city-owned parking lot located on the east side of Monroe Street directly behind the Dearborn Historical Museum Commodore's quarters from September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two at seven A M. to October first, twenty twenty-two at twelve P M. for the Dearborn Historical Museum's ninth annual Beer Festival on Friday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Also authorizing to waive the city noise ordinance for the duration of the event and all fees, including tent and electrical permits.
Okay, the Museum Guild of Dearborn is holding its ninth annual Beer Festival fundraiser on September thirtieth with extended hours from seven P M. to midnight. The Recreation Parks Department and Dearborn Historical Museum request a special event permit approval to hold their annual event and beer festival and enclose exclusively use of the Commodore's quarters and adjoining side of the parking lot. The request is to exempt them from fees found in chapter thirteen pursuant to ordinance number thirteen dash forty-six, permit festival, and also to waive the sound ordinance of one hundred decibels specifically from seven P M. to midnight on September thirtieth. Additionally, the Museum Guild of Dearborn will need assistance from our Dearborn Police Department and B Patrol checks and fifty barricades and fencing throughout the event. It's a great event they've been doing every year. So the Dearborn Police and Recreation and Parks Department have been administering this throughout the time, and we look forward to it. Like, Mr. Tate, would you like to come up and speak on it? Yeah, we have some people who are from it. They're also requesting immediate effect.
I'm assistant curator of the museum here with Jack, our director, and it is a great event that the museum puts on every year, and Jack is recently getting back to work after, after a bit of a health scare, but he's getting back. And the event is a good way for a lot of people who might not otherwise go to the museum, attend the museum. We have an open house. It'll be decorated for sort of an Oktoberfest theme. So it's a great way for people to experience a little bit of history and have a night of fun music, conversation, and entertainment.
Thank you.
I might add, we also have a Halloween aspect to it. And so definitely, if you're coming, dress up. And the theme, I think, is going to be Countdown to Midnight.
Yeah, it's always a great time, Jack, and I'm sorry, your assistant, I didn't get your name.
Matt Craft.
Matt Craft, thank you. I know it's, you know, I live down the street, so I see and I hear the noise. It's really good noise. Nice fun time. It's not bad. I think it's a great, great event. And some people might remember early on, when you took over during my initial term in two thousand and fourteen, the council had tasked the museum to try to generate some revenue to cost, to offset some of the costs that were going from the general fund, and you've done a tremendous job nine years in a row, so we do appreciate that.
Well, we were given a task by the former council before that also at the administration of cleaning up the museum, cleaning up the collection. I can honestly say now, the size of the collection at the Dearborn Historical Museum is close to sixty percent smaller than it was ten and a half years ago.
Yeah, that's excellent. That's a great job. I know, Jack, some of our residents might not know that you had find some artifacts that were, had some historical relevance to Dearborn, but also much more relevance to other areas that you had sent out to them as well.
And we, those items have been contacted, the museums in those areas, and if they were interested, we seem to, they were repatriated to that area.
That's great.
We had a large group of Plains Indians artifacts, which I think we all know that this area was not Plains Indians. And, but they were so fragile that I actually drove them to Wisconsin to deliver them to the museum there.
That's great. I do appreciate it. So just to remind everybody, it's February, September thirtieth.
Correct.
And it's from seven to midnight.
Seven to midnight, and tickets are available on our website. And we're looking forward to seeing everybody there.
We appreciate it.
We will also have, I think, believe, you're getting hold of A and W Root Beer and some other soft drinks.
Yeah, no, I remember. I was there for the root beer, because you did have it before.
And there'll also be a silent auction at the event.
Silent auction.
We've been getting lots of sponsors coming in, offering prize packages, night stays, golf outings, those sort of things.
Good stuff.
So it should be a very good event, and appreciate if you all could come and join us.
Definitely stop by.
And if I may, Council President.
Yes, Mayor.
I'm trying to use this time to just acknowledge the hard work of Mr. Jack Tate. One is a blessing to have you back at the office. We had our one-on-one today. I wish I could say he took the time to recover at home without doing work, but what I saw when I made a surprise visit was staff in and out of the house, getting the orders to run back to the museum. And I think, I don't know what came first, you know, the placement of the museum or Jack's house is nearby because it's just a few blocks away. We couldn't keep him out of the office, but it's great to have you back, and thank you for that.
Well, I hope I can honestly say I really never quit working during that time. I know.
We appreciate that. We do, definitely appreciate that.
Glad to have you back.
Thank you very much, Jack. Glad to have you back.
Thank you all.
All right. So hopefully, we'll see everybody on Friday, September thirtieth at, between seven and midnight. And of course, it's immediate effect, Mr. Clerk. Any questions?
I didn't have that on my form, but I will definitely make it.
Yeah, it's on mine, so hopefully, yeah. Just added, thank you.
Okay.
Hearing, seeing, no objection. Unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Item sixty-three, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Herrick, approving the request of the Kiwanis Club of Dearborn, P L. Box two four one one, to hold its annual peanut street sales on September eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twenty twenty-two, from seven A M. to seven P M. at various street corners and businesses throughout the city.
Okay, and it's celebrating its ninety-third year. The Kiwanis Club of Dearborn will be holding its peanut street sales. The funds go directly to support numerous community service projects and local organizations that benefit our youth, communities, youth, and elderly and disadvantaged. The Kiwanis Club of Dearborn is requesting permission to sell peanuts on the street of Dearborn between seven A M. and seven P M. September eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh of this year, of course. Immediate request is also being requested on this, so if you see them standing out there with the peanuts, they're pretty good. It goes for a great cause. We hope you support it. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item.
Item sixty-four, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Herrick, acknowledging a donation from the Islamic Center of Detroit of two vending machines for the Dearborn Public Health Narcan Vending Machine Project, also authorizing the placement of one of those vending machines at the Dearborn Public Health Narcan Vending Machine on city property located at the John D. Dingle Train Station at two-one-two-zero-one Michigan Avenue and requesting immediate effect.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. So the Department of Public Health, which is D P H, successfully requested and received three hundred ninety-six units of Narcan from the Michigan D H S S. D P H here in Dearborn will be using these to fill two vending machines placed strategically across the city to provide residents with free Narcan. The vending machine has a capacity of holding one hundred and fifty units. D P H will replenish these machines as needed. It's also providing pamphlets, recording promotional materials, and how to use Narcan and wraparound services to get people to support what they need in attaching them to the vending machines. The use of the vending machines and the three hundred ninety-six units at no cost to the city and is requesting immediate effect. And as the clerk indicated, there's one location specified at the John D. Dingle Train Station. Director, would you like to come up? Director Abazid to speak on this item?
Council President, council members, thank you so much for having us. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Can everyone hear me okay here? So we're really thrilled about this intervention, and I want to make sure that I'm crediting D P H fellows for their support. As members of the council know, we recruited thirty fellows, twenty-five of whom were in the offices on most days, and they wrapped up their time with our department this past Thursday. And they worked at no cost to the city, but provided an economic impact, and the number that I provided in our private consultations is actually an underestimate, an economic impact to the city of six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And they also received one hundred and twenty thousand dollars of their own support from universities and nonprofits across southeast Michigan. They contributed almost twelve thousand hours this summer. And so the reason I bring up those numbers is because interventions like this and the next one on the agenda would not have happened without them. And so as it relates to the Narcan vending machines, we're thrilled about this. It's, you know, the opioid epidemic is touching all parts of the country. Dearborn is not immune from that, and Narcan is a proven lifesaver in those overdose situations. And so the idea here is twofold. One, to reduce the stigma around carrying Narcan. I've had probably our most extensive conversations on this with our police department, and as you all know, they carry Narcan on them, and they're extremely supportive of this initiative. And so we're thrilled about the prospects of making a dent. The opioid epidemic is an intractable problem across the country. We don't, Dearborn's not going to solve it, but my God, we better try to put a dent into it, and this effort allows us to do that, so.
Well, thank you, Director Abazid. I can tell you from myself, and I know some of my colleagues did entertain your invitation to meet the fellows. I thought it was tremendous. We had people from Hawaii, North Carolina, Virginia that are all studying in their master's programs that came here to spend the summer at no cost to our residents to make the impact that they did throughout, and there's more to come. I thought it was tremendous. I immediately left your meeting and had our council staff try to invite everybody else that could come from the council to meet in bunches and see what your work that you have done. I really do appreciate that, and I know this is just the beginning, and hopefully, we do have a grant coming down from the Attorney General, which is approximately eight hundred thousand dollars, so I'm sure the council will appropriate some of that for some more good work to do in your department. As people have said, and parents, you know, I have five children, people have said, you know, what is the government doing? And as you indicated, we can't have an answer to everything, but we could try to help, and doing nothing is not the answer. It's definitely not for me. So I do appreciate this, and we look forward to the second location in Monmouth, and I know that you believe in data. I know the maps you showed us with the heat seeking of where these problems areas are, and they're not historically in just areas of income poverty aspect, they're across the whole city. I seen the map myself. I thought the presentations were fabulous by your team in just a short time. I mean, people really don't understand when they look, you know, we're in eight months in, and what you've done so far is just tremendous, so I really appreciate your work and look forward to the future of it. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. If I can, Director, you made mention of it during the committee of the whole, just a couple things to let others know is why the location was sought. And second of all, of course, we don't want to put it in the police department because that kind of defeats the purpose in of itself, but we do have a very serious situation with overdosing within our community everywhere. And just to reiterate, it's already been said several times now, but it is a free item. It's no cost to us, three hundred ninety-six, you know, of these items. But something that was made mention in social media, and I want to address that if you could, is these vending machines. How accessible are they, and are they able to be broken into or sold on the open market?
It's a fair question. So just on the last point, Narcan is readily available and free at a lot of locations. I mean, if you walk into Access Community Organization tomorrow morning, you can walk out with ten units of Narcan. And so I'm less concerned around the opportunity for those bad faith actors in society who might take an extra one or two and then resell it. It's actually not that lucrative because you can walk in, there's a Narcan standing order in the state, which means that any pharmacy can distribute Narcan at no cost to residents, and so that's not a major concern for me. In terms of how and why we chose the location we did, members of the council, you saw the private, the heat maps that we shared in our private consultations. The reason why we chose the train station is twofold. One is we tried to identify city property because we didn't want to go through private property because that's another sort of legal gray area or quagmire. And two, we tried to choose a location that's within proximity of a lot of different hotspots in the Dearborn community. We didn't want to choose specific hotspots. We wanted to choose a centralized location to those hotspots, and the train station fit that criteria. So I hope that answers your question.
And we're still going to go ahead and identify any and other, if not more, locations.
Yeah, we do have two vending machines that were donated to us, so we haven't identified yet the second location, but we'll be sure to keep council apprised when we do.
Right.
Thank you.
If I may.
Yes.
Council President and to council, first of all, you know, thank you so much to D P H fellows, the liveliest bunch of folk on the second floor of the D A C who came in each and every single day and just brought a culture and atmosphere that we're certainly going to miss. But credit, obviously, to Director Abazid for building that culture and creating that team. I wanted to contextualize this a little bit about who uses the Narcan or who would go to the vending machine. You know, what I read online, a lot of folk was, you know, was somebody who suffers from substance use be the person going to the vending machine. Certainly, that's one person who would. But what people who have reached out to me are family members and friends of those who suffer from substance and drug use, who want to make sure that they have it on hand just in case that their loved one didn't come home that night, or if they did come home or overdosed in the basement, whatever it might be, that they would be prepared to deliver the Narcan. And on these vending machines would be Q R. codes that you can scan to watch a YouTube video that delivers the instructional material you need in order to deliver Narcan appropriately and effectively. The second component is, since coming into office, you know, all of council and our public health director receive the daily police report of the major incidents that happened the night before in each major beat across the city. If you evaluate those reports almost on a daily basis, there's a mental health or substance drug, substance and drug use-related instance every single day, and we read those stories every morning, two such examples. And in the area nearby, frankly, to this vending machine, one was a nine-month-old that was brought back to life because of Narcan, because got ahold of heroin that was on the floor because of the parent that was suffering from substance and drug use. And thankfully, it was an officer that indicated maybe Narcan would work. You would never attempt to do that with a nine-month-old. The second such instance, which happened a few months ago, was a twenty-eight-year-old who was found passed away in their vehicle, and it was found out that the friends were in the vehicle, but when their friend overdosed, they panicked and left. They never had Narcan, they didn't know what to do. But in that instance, if their friends had Narcan and their friend had overdosed before them, they could have administered Narcan and saved the life. And so those are just two examples that come to my mind over these last just few months of being in office, and the examples that I have seen, at least during my tenure, of where this could have made a major difference. So I'm excited for this initiative to roll out. It's a harm reduction initiative, and hopefully, you know, even saving one life would mean that it's worth it, and it was at no cost to us by any means. And the last component is the vending machine, I think, will be placed inside the train station. And so, you know, it's not, somebody can break the glass and take it. It's all programmed to make sure that you can take an X amount during every few minutes, and hopefully, we really start making a difference. But again, credit, maybe what we can do is actually post the heat map that was created by the health fellows.
That was great.
In addition to any press releases that come out from our end.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Director Abazid. Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll will be attached. Next item, please.
Item sixty-five, resolution by councilmembers Burns and Herrick, authorizing the finance director to recognize and appropriate the PAD project grant in the amount of two thousand dollars for the purpose of providing free menstrual products to students in the Dearborn Public School System and authorizing the health director to sign the grant agreement and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. So again, this project award to the city department of D P H is in the amount of two thousand dollars, and the purpose is to provide free menstrual products for students across the three high schools that will be placed in the bathrooms at so forth Dearborn High and Fortson High School. Is believed that this two thousand dollar grant will allow for the pilot program to run across all three high schools for the duration of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three academic year, and immediate effect is being requested. Councilor Burns?
All right, thank you, Council President. I'd just like to start by thanking Director Abazid, public health fellows, who I know worked with our friends in Dearborn Public Schools, to secure this grant and bring it forward, to really lead us down a path toward greater period equity, which is so, so critically important. You know, we know that menstrual products are not accessories, they're necessities, and I think that providing these products in the bathrooms in our three public high schools to start is a really great step, and I think it'll make life a little bit easier and certainly more equitable for our students who utilize these products. So I hope that this is a first in other similar grants and opportunities, again, to lead toward greater equity to this end. So I look forward to hearing more, and thank you again for your work on this.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Appreciate it.
If I could just acknowledge.
Yes.
Three fellows who are in the room here today. One is Amira, who is strategically placed there recording a video, which is what she's done so well this summer in addition to so many other things. And there's also Nud and Jenna, who, the three of them, the three out of thirty, they've been fundamental and they were instrumental in getting this grant.
Yeah, Director Abazid, I do appreciate it, and some of the comments in the call, I think, were very pointed regarding the school system and your collaboration with the school system. This project is, yeah, Councilman Perez, I brought that up. This is intended for us to begin this project and have the schools take it over. And again, the mayor, as you said from day one, the vision to look at all of our aspects in a public health light. And I think it's coming true every day that we see. So we really appreciate that. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on this item? Here in and seeing none, you may ask. We'll be attached. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Under new business, item 67, resolution by council president Serini, supported unanimously offering-
Mr. Clark, 66, sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I do that all the time.
Okay. Item 66, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and Burns, authorizing the finance director to recognize and appropriate the Medicaid grant through Access in the amount of $15,000 for the purpose of educating the community about affordable health insurance options and authorizing the health director to sign and grant agreement and requesting immediate effect.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Clark. Another great program, Access Community Organization, has awarded the city of Dearborn DPH department a mini grant of $15,000 to assist with education and community about affordable health insurance options, which is very difficult to navigate through Medicaid and outreach partnerships, which seeks to support efforts to reach and enroll families in Medicaid and children's health insurance program, which is CHIP in Michigan. The city will engage in this program between August of this year to July of 2023 and is requesting immediate effect. Again, to our DPH director, you could stay there. I mean, for a department of one and a fellow of 30, you have done a tremendous job again. So I really appreciate that. Another $15,000 grant and educating the community is very -- and this is a serious aspect. There's many people that do not know how to navigate the health system. So it is definitely needed, and we do appreciate that. Any questions or comments on this item? Thank you, Director Abazid. You may ask. We'll be attached. Next item, please.
Okay. Now, under new business, item 67, resolution by council president Serini, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Richard Samaz.
Richard Samaz passed away on July 31st at the age of 90. He was born on August 14th, 1932. He's a beloved husband of Mickey and dearest father of Keith and Mark. He also is a cherished brother of Lottie. He leaves behind his grandchildren, Sibley and Alexa, along with great grandchildren Riley, Logan, and Sadie, whom he adored very much. Richard and Mickey were married for 64 blessed years and are long-life residents of the city of Dearborn. They were both proud and loyal residents of their community. And Mickey is 86 years old and plans to remain in Dearborn for the rest of her life. She has raised her sons, along with her extended family here in Dearborn. Richard and Mickey, I'm sorry, met 66 years ago at the DeSoto Auto Plants, where they became in love at first sight, as Richard's wife indicated. And their relationship ended up in their marriage that has lasted until he had passed. Richard's career path led him to work for the city of Dearborn here at Public Works Division within the highways department for 25-plus years. He was known by too many as a dedicated, loyal, and helpful employee, demonstrating great team-oriented skills. His hobbies included maintaining very happy married life with his wife and family. And his favorite hobbies were tending to his home vegetable garden and fishing with his two boys. We will forever be indebted to Richard for his positive impact in his life's work at the city of Dearborn. He will be greatly missed by his friends and family and neighbors and his wife, who were blessed to know him. To all, we offer our deepest condolences. Unanimous rule will be attached. Next item, please.
Item 68, resolution by councilwoman Herrick, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Zara Abbas.
Eternal optimist and fighter for social justice, Zara Abbas, passed away on July 28th, 2022, at the age of 35. Zara had much that made her life a struggle. She was incredibly open about her battle with epilepsy and severe uncontrollable seizures, but she made her focus to help others. Zara spoke up for what she believed in, and those who knew her knew they could count on Zara to show up and roll up her sleeves when the hard work needed to be done. Zara was an active advocate for healthcare and access to alternative approaches, including cannabis, to help those with epilepsy. She spoke passionately about the issues she believed in at rallies, community meetings, and meetings with political leaders across the state of Michigan and the nation. She also served on boards and volunteered with the Epilepsy Foundation of Michigan and served on the Healthy Dearborn Coalition. When cannabis stopped her seizures after 10 failed years of conventional medicine, Zara fought to get cannabis legalized so that anyone in need could access it in the state of Michigan. When she realized that she could forge change by driving public policy, she became a Democratic National Convention precinct delegate, a delegate to the National Convention, I'm sorry, a delegate to the State Central Committee of the Michigan Democratic Party, as well as Secretary of the Young Democrats of Michigan, and she served as the chair of the Cannabis Caucus. As vice chair and then chair of the Cannabis Caucus, Zara worked to help free cannabis prisoners, including helping set up a meeting with Attorney General Dana Nessel that resulted in the first-ever instance of an attorney general writing a letter in support of a Michigan prisoners' commutation. Zara lobbied relentlessly on behalf of fair, sensible, and just cannabis laws, frequently meeting with elected officials. Congresswoman Debbie Dingell, Congresswoman Rashida Talib, and many other elected officials and dignitaries have recognized Zara's impactful work. Zara worked as a medical assistant and managed the Dearborn Pipers Program, helping children with various challenges gain confidence through rewarding and fun experiences like learning to ride a bicycle this summer. She wanted to go back to school to get a degree in public health to help shape rules and regulations around healthcare, drug policy, and disability issues. We can honor Zara's memory by following her example to fight for helping those who need a voice or a hand. Zara will be dearly missed by the many people whose lives she touched through her kindness, compassion, and activism. To all, we offer our sincere condolences.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herrick. Councilwoman Burns?
Very well said, Councilwoman Herrick. Zara was just a phenomenal, one-of-a-kind human being, and I was very blessed to call her a friend. You know, she was an amazing mix of sweet and fierce, and she never met a challenge that she wouldn't be willing to face head-on. She really led from her heart. And because that's who she was, and that's how she did her work in the community and across the state and the country even, she was able to impact just countless lives. She may not be with us physically anymore, but her legacy will live on forever through her family, her loved ones, her friends, and her advocacy work. So I'm sure she is resting peacefully and also resting in power. She will be dearly and deeply missed.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Unanimous rule will be attached.
If I may, Council President?
Oh, Mayor, yes, absolutely.
You know, Zara Abbas was one of those folks where if you were in public office, you undoubtedly came across her at one point in your life. Over my last five years, you know, prior to coming in as mayor, as state rep, she was in my office every single week with a different hat on, with a different organization advocating for something else that improved the quality of life for a community throughout the state of Michigan. And although an unfortunately short life, a very impactful life. And I think the impact that she had, you know, I would struggle to generate that same impact if I had several lifetimes to live. And, you know, I don't know what we can do to cement just the platinum level of community member that Zara was. But I look forward to finding a way to make sure that we can, because, you know, you don't come across individuals like her who show up or in attendance but never seek the acknowledgement or recognition. They always are in pursuit of the outcome. And that is what she fought like heck for each and every single day. And so I wish her family patience. Apoplepsy sucks. Seizures suck. And I hope that through her efforts and the work that she did with the appropriate non-profit organizations, that we do find a medical pathway forward for individuals who suffer from similar and such diseases.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your words on that. You may ask. We'll be attached. Mr. Clark, next item, please.
Nothing further from the clerk.
Okay. At this time, we are going to open to the council. And I would start off with just a couple of small things for my colleagues. First, I'd like to acknowledge our city clerk and congratulate him on obtaining the Michigan PMC certification, being recognized by the Municipal Association of Municipal Clerts. So, Mr. Clark, we do appreciate that. We did receive the letter.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I appreciate it.
I do appreciate it. I know that since your tenure, you have continued to try to further your education and find out what's the best practices. And have even, we did in our council, you even advised some things that were best practice that helped change some of the rules that we did as well. So we do appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Wanted to make sure you're recognized. For myself, before I turn over to my colleagues, I just wanted, I had an opportunity to meet with the senior citizens at our senior, at the Civic Center, Ford Performing Arts Center, at our senior service center. And I was talking to a few residents. There has been, obviously, a lot of concern with volunteers and the lack of them. So I just wanted to take this time to let everybody know, many of my colleagues have dealt with the Meals on Wheels program. That is such a vital program to our senior citizens, where people take the food daily to residents that do need it in our senior buildings and throughout our city. So the program Meals on Wheels, if you go to thecityofdearborn.org, we are looking for volunteers, and our senior services is also looking for them. That's your contact point. So I wanted to make sure that I shared that to our residents. I know schools starting back, but I also know that there are some people that like to continue to give if they can. And the Meals on Wheels program is a tremendous program, and we want to make sure that it continues to be successful. I'd like to turn it over to anybody from my colleagues. Have anything to add? Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you, Council President. Just two things tonight. I'd like to start by acknowledging on a light note that the intersection at Neckel and Colson is being resurfaced. And not only is it being repaved, but it's being repaved with concrete. And I grew up right there. My parents still live there. And this is like beyond thrilling. It's been kind of a bumpy mess my entire lifetime, and I'm in my 30s, so this is huge. So just wanted to thank the crew and the folks who have been out there doing that work on behalf of, I think, everybody on the street, but especially my dad, who is a seasoned construction hawk and has been watching this project from his house, which is second off the corner, quite closely. So it's very exciting, and thanks to the folks who are out there doing that. I also did want to recognize Mary Ann Bartels, our longtime library director who retired recently. She was phenomenal, dedicated, just decades of her life and her career to the city of Dearborn, to our libraries, and, you know, people of all ages, myself included, who grew up going to the libraries. So really just wanted to acknowledge her, recognize her dedication, her professionalism, and her commitment, again, to the people, to the city, and to the libraries. I think one of her probably biggest projects, certainly within the last five years or so, was shepherding the revamp and reimagining of our main library, Henry Fortson Tenille, modernizing that and really just bringing it into the modern era and making sure that it's a usable, enjoyable space for generations to come. So wanted to acknowledge her commitment, her dedication. And I know we also have Julie Schaefer, who's here with us tonight, who I believe is serving as our interim director. So Julie, also wanted to acknowledge you and thank you for stepping into that role.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Perez?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to recognize our council that just recently, July 27th, passed our council rules of order. It was a lot of work, a lot of months took place, and we did that maybe a number of years ago that was brought forward and adopted. But for the folks out in the audience or at home, the council rules of order are available online. It's under special meetings, and our council meetings are listed in our agendas. Take a look at it, just like tonight, you know, the 60-some items. You may want to take a look at it before coming down here or viewing at home to get an idea of what's going on, what's going to be talked about. But this consent agenda that we have, you may not notice because it wasn't talked about during this meeting. We had about a dozen appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions. Really, just was talked about just briefly by our council president, volunteer, get involved in your community. We have all sorts of boards and commissions. We have several different commissioners that are within our audience here tonight. So please, take a look at that and see what you're interested in. Get involved in your community. Last but not least, I want to address the mayor, if at all possible, getting a lot of feedback from people. And I just want some redress or some ability for people to make any comments about Homecoming. We've had, Homecoming was just a matter of a couple weeks ago. I'd like to see some way that residents out there or people that had the opportunity to go to Homecoming, where do they go? Where do they send their comments? And what are we going to do with it? Is there going to be some sort of a Homecoming report?
Thank you so much for those leading questions, Councilman. So this is our first public council meeting, I guess, since Homecoming Festival. It feels like it happened months ago. I think it's been two weeks. And so as it pertains to comments and feedback, and so I've been soliciting the feedback in real time. And so many of you might have seen the Golf Car Chronicles, kind of driving around Homecoming Festival, soliciting feedback. It's kind of like undercover boss. I was in hiding and trying to solicit feedback from those who were attending the Homecoming Festival in real time. But I also had a follow-up Facebook Live and solicited feedback, as well as making several posts on several of the social media pages. So that's one outlet. Second is, we're scheduling right now a meeting with all the vendors and participants and volunteers to have a roundtable and just an honest feedback of what went right, what went wrong, and just trying to get a 360 feedback about Homecoming in that manner. Third, if you have more feedback to give and you haven't had opportunity yet, please also send your feedback to mayor@ci.dearborn.mi.us. Eventually, we're going to fix our email system, God willing. But that's our at now to contact us. But just email the mayor. If you go to cityofdearborn.org, there's also a link where contact the mayor, and you can submit your feedback to Homecoming. And we're exploring if we put out some sort of survey online for people to just submit in a formal fashion about what you thought about what went right, what went good, what food did you like, what didn't you like, things like that, just all around. So we're also exploring that. And then annually, with every Homecoming Festival, there is a report that's posted online. And so as we curate our report, we'll be sure to hopefully have that up online as well, as has been the precedent with years prior. I think one of the requests was, can we include some of the feedback from Homecoming? I think we'll do our best to try to synthesize Homecoming to the greatest of our abilities. I think there's, you know, there's a whole spectrum of feedback that I have received, and it's all welcome. I have thick skin, so the comments don't hurt. But I welcome all of it. You hated the location, you love the location, you want to modify the location. I'm all for it. I think it only hopefully adds to making a better Homecoming Festival moving forward. So we'll explore the survey. But if not, please email us. If not, comment on the Facebook. We're taking notes, and we'll synthesize it all and hopefully put as much as we can that's meaningful into report, as has been with years prior.
Thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate that. And I do think bringing in all the vendors after the first experience is probably the most vital information you're going to get. And that will lead to some good, maybe, changes that will help make it better. But we do appreciate the effort. And I did see you in the Ferris wheel, too. So you were up there. That was a good video. And I know that you had several directors out in the golf carts shadowing people around. I did enjoy it. I thought it was phenomenal. Most people, I live in, by the old location, and I could tell you that it was welcome, that it was in a location that was larger. And I'm sure it was, from what I seen, there was many more people there, of course, because the place is larger. And I liked the way it was set up, where the gamings were separated from the foods and the vendors. So hopefully we'll get some feedback and go forward. We do appreciate that. Anything else from my colleagues? Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. Regarding Homecoming, I think that for anybody who attended, they saw how hard the staff was working. So yes, the golf carts, you had a chance to maybe be driven by the mayor and those front-facing positions. But I have to commend everybody who worked behind the scenes, planning it week after week during the, you know, the first few months of the mayor's administrations, they threw themselves into planning it and trying to make it bigger and better than ever. And some of the folks that you don't necessarily see, you know, the recreation staff, the DPW staff, police and fire in the background, the lifeguards who are thrown into doing all kinds of tasks before, during, and after Homecoming. It was clear that everybody was all hands on deck. So thank you to the staff for that. I also wanted to thank DTE. We had an issue in Dearborn with some old power lines that were burning, and the residents were upset because they felt that it wasn't being addressed. And thanks to the mayor's administration working proactively with DTE, we were relieved to hear that that situation was resolved. The lines are being replaced. A pole is being replaced. And, you know, if there's ever an unsafe situation with power lines, of course, we all know, stay away from them, but report them and be diligent. You know, if you don't get an answer from DTE right away, let the mayor and the administration know, let the city council know, because we will act on your behalf to make sure that dangerous situations are resolved. Nobody should have to live in fear that their garage, let alone their garage or their house, or that somebody that they love is in danger from power lines or anything else in the city. So please speak up. And we saw how effectively that worked with the team last week. Also, I wanted to wish everybody who's going, has family members going back to school in the next week or two, happy and safe back-to-school season. College students are returning this week, and I wish my son Brendan all the best in his junior year at U of M. And I wanted to remind people, you're going to see it. There are going to be more cars on the streets in the morning and after school. And please be patient, especially around the schools. If you're dropping off students picking them up, please pay attention to the safety patrol folks that are out there and be courteous and kind to each other. folks that are out there and be courteous and kind to each other, because this is, especially as we get back to school, it can be a little bit harrowing, but of course, throughout the year, be respectful of the neighbors of the schools as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from my colleagues on council? Okay. Anything from Mr. Clerk, from the Clerk's Department?
No, we're all set, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Anything, Mayor, from the administration?
So just a few. I think two councilpeople stole my thunder. The first was Mary Ann Bartels, so just want to wish her a happy retirement. You're talking over 50 years of service, you don't come across that often. And so just want to commend her for the decades of service and obviously keeping our libraries a premier institution here in the city of Dearborn, and we look forward to partnering with Julie and the Library Commission as we move forward. And just so folks are aware, a national search will be happening to identify the next library director for the city of Dearborn. Second was Homecoming, and so wanted to just acknowledge the countless staff, volunteers, vendors, patrons, everybody that helped make it a success. It was exciting, it was exhausting, but it was overall a great, I think, celebration after a few years of COVID, to be able to come back together and just celebrate who we are in the city of Dearborn. The third on DTE, and I'll actually allow the neighborhood liaison, he'll come up in the public comment section, he has a written update that DTE sent forward, and he'll speak to that. The last, I want to just, you know, talk about DPW. I went on three-ish ride-alongs, I'll call them. One was with the sweeper division, with the highways team, and so we got to go out on our sweeper, kind of see how that works, and excited to get us back in a pathway where we are getting to eight neighborhood sweeps per calendar year, if not greater, if we're able to. The second was, I got to go out to the water main breaks. There was one night where we had five water main breaks happen at the same time. What happened was the water pressure kicked up in the city of Detroit, and it bursted five water main breaks at the same time. So I wanted to go out and see what it's like to be in a hole nine feet deep, trying to identify a water main break, which I learned is a very archaic process, but something that you have to do. But then just the process it takes to dig it up, how many folks, how labor-intensive it is. I'm hoping to be in one of the holes probably next week or so myself and try to fix my own water main break, against the advisement of legal, but I think I just want to see it and experience it myself. I have to keep saying that because Jeremy advises me to keep saying that. But what I learned was that there is a machine that we can acquire, a truck that we can acquire, that can shave off an hour or two hours to repair a water main break, and I think that's something that we're going to explore and hopefully bring forward to council. But the other team I was out with this week, this week or Friday, I don't even remember the days are, yesterday, okay, it's yesterday. That's how the days are close. It was with the water and sewerage team, but I went out with, you kind of see this big box white truck that says sewer inspection. It looks like those trucks in the movies where there's a bunch of police in the back, kind of listening in the neighborhood. It actually is a camera truck, but it's a camera truck with a camera that goes down a manhole. And what they do is they actually inspect our water and sewer lines throughout the city. So I got to go out to actually see how it works. And then, again, very skilled work that our team is putting on, was a great experience. I wanted to Facebook Live it, but I was CDTV-ing it, and so, you know, I'll go back a second time to get it on Facebook Live to walk the residents through what the process actually looks like. And during, while I was out there, they actually took the vector truck to suck out broken sewer lines that was inside the sewer. And so you got to see in real time how we as a city, one of the few municipalities that actually does this. This is a service that we provide as a city that most residents don't see. So we identify if your residential line is actually off of the main sewer line in the ground, and we'll, engineering will send you a letter saying, hey, heads up, your residential sewer line is actually not connected properly, which can lead to problems later on. But also got to witness how they fix minor repairs, or how they flag if our sewer needs to be lined in the future. So I learned a whole lot in the one and a half hours that I was there, a very short time, so wanted to give credit to those teams as well. But those are just the updates that I had. I'm continuing to make my way around to kind of shadow every single sub-department across the city. I think we'll be doing, I'll be going out with the inspectors fairly soon to see how the inspections actually happen across the city. So I'll report back on that as well.
Thank you very much, Mayor, appreciate that. Anything else from the administration?
That's all.
Okay, at this time, we have concluded in our opening to our public comment section at the end as well. Anyone who'd like to speak to the council, please step forward and grab a comment card, and I'm going to call up what we have already. So first one is Mr. Hussein Hashem.
I want to touch base on two topics. One is infrastructure, and the other one is Narcan initiative. In terms of the first topic, I applaud the administration and city council for taking action in terms of approving the evaluation. I think this is very important. My first question on that is, what's the timeline for this evaluation?
Evaluation timeline is up to two years.
Up to two years.
But it could be sooner if it's completed.
Beautiful. Since it's going to take two years...
Yes, question.
I know the issues will not be able to be eliminated until the evaluation is done, so you can know exactly what the problem is, but is the administration doing any actions to at least minimize the risk to residents?
Yes. Yes, I mean, the mayor can answer, there's been several things we've done throughout the council.
Correct. We've moved forward several items, we moved forward some items that insert flap valves in our sewer lines that help prevent flooding in certain neighborhoods. As these projects arise, if we're doing it, we'll try to insert that, you know, the flap valve, which basically is like a backflow preventer on a main sewer line, and so it'll help prevent flooding in several thousands of homes. We are exploring right now, for example, Potaski put out a report of all the green infrastructure implementation that they're going to include, so we got a hold of that report, as well as the consultant that made that report. We're bringing them in to walk us through what we can be doing to update our ordinances or what we can incorporate now as we're digging up roads to help begin the greening of our city. We don't have to wait for a report to tell us that permeable surfaces help. We can start incorporating that now. So we're looking at how we can include that. We just submitted to HUD a report for how we'll utilize $16.2 million that was awarded to us. It's called the Home Hardening Program, and so we submitted the draft with economic development as well as the support of our DPH fellows. So that was just submitted. There'll be a public comment period that goes on with that as well, and hopefully more feedback, but hopefully that's how we implement, how we actualize $16.2 million across the city in the areas that were hardest hit. And then obviously, the study's ongoing right now. We'll have more announcements to come about rain gardens, rain barrels on properties, and things like that, as we continually update our ordinances through that green line.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, for the update. I think it's very important for the community to know that the administration and city council are actually proactive about the issue. Since the flooding last year, it was devastating in terms of the materials they lost, but also the sentimental loss to people. So I applaud you guys for being proactive on the issue. The other topic that I would like to touch base on is the Narcan kits and the vending machine. I'd like to applaud the Dearborn Health Department, director, fellows, and staff for this very important issue. As you guys know, in 2021, the US has surpassed over 1 million deaths because of the opioid epidemic, and Dearborn is no stranger to that. You know, we lose, on a weekly basis in the US, we lose 1,500 Americans to the opioid crisis. In terms of the location, I understand it's a city property, I understand, I think it's open 24/7, so the accessibility, all that. One concern that I might have is probably the privacy, since it's a sensitive topic, and some of the culture that we have to Dearborn and Dearborn, it has the, you know, weird look at someone that actually reach out for help, for help, that's wrong, but it's there, you know what I mean? So I feel some people will feel discouraged to basically use the vending machine because of the privacy issue. Are we adding, like, is there a way where we can, people can get directly this kit from the Health Department? Is there a way?
So at this point, what we're doing is placing it in the vending machine, so you don't have to interact with any individual, to try to take away from that personal interaction that might push you away from actually asking for the Narcan. As it pertains to the placement within the train station, we want to place it in an area where, one, it's still a safe and secure area, but we have personnel, it's being monitored, things of that nature, but it's not a high-traffic area where you might be not, where you might not be persuaded to actually go and withdraw the lifesaving Narcan from the vending machine. We're trying to be very particular about where we place this, as well as being in a relative location next to where the heat maps actually demonstrated there's large overdoses happening, and there certainly are along that Michigan Avenue strip. So we don't think that the train station is going to push people away. We think it might be placed in an area, and we'll post photos and stuff of where it happens, where it actually invites folk to do it in a private way, although a public building.
Beautiful, that's awesome. I know we got, I'm sorry, let me know on my...
Yeah, you have three minutes, so, but we've been interacting. You have more than these two topics?
I just want to be respectful of your job.
You'll appreciate it.
To the same topic, I know we got 300 some, are we going to be able to get three fills after those are done?
396. The director's here, I think he did indicate this is a pilot program.
Yes, we can, we can stop that.
And I'm glad you mentioned access and LAHC, because actually, each one of them, they got $500,000 grant just recently from the opioid settlement, and they have a lot of kits. We just got a kit from them today to do like a video in Arabic about how to perform Narcan.
You have 30 seconds.
Beautiful. Let me just finish. Thank you for everything that you do. I just invite you guys to do partnership with all local media, to push that message out, to explain to people in bilingual languages, in all languages, not just bilingual, Arabic, English, Spanish, wherever the case might be, just to get out there and market that we have this lifesaving kit that really saves lives. I know many people who, it really helped. And last thing, I'll make a plug, WhatsApp media did a video in Arabic and English yesterday about how to use Narcan kits. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. Director, just so you know, yeah, just so you know too, like I was just sent this, I'm sure you know the Detroit Free Press did a story on this, ended up going on CNN that news, yeah, that the Narcan is going to be at the Dearborn train station and available too. So obviously, your media connections are working, so keep on the video.
Council President, if I may, we actually didn't do any press on this. I mean, when something goes before the cow on Thursday, it becomes public information, and so we couldn't stifle the news on Friday, as you all saw, it spread pretty rapidly. Just a quick note, that the mayor alluded to this, but I had a little more texture. It's not just the vending machines, we have a complete suite of activities associated with the vending machines, including videos of both Arabic and English. And so someone will be able to scan the QR code, it'll take you not just to YouTube, but it'll take you to videos that we recorded internally, CTV recorded, in Arabic and English, and we do also have targeted outreach interventions planned as well. So we are, we are cognizant that there is a stigma still. We're hoping the vending machine can, you know, ameliorate that a little bit, but we're also focused on targeted outreach to the community, and hopefully we'll have more soon, more soon and coming months to announce.
Do appreciate that. Councilman Abraham?
Just wanted to follow up, and I fully support this initiative with the Narcan. I brought it up Thursday night, and I, just looking at the Amtrak's own hours of operation, they claim that the station is not 24 hours.
It's not.
Okay. I just, I know that was, I don't know where that started, but I think we probably need to be more accurate. If this train station is not always open, there should be, you know, limited expectation for access.
Yeah, I actually stopped by after work today and just talked to some of their operators. They're open 6:00 AM to 9:30 PM, and so I think that'll be a focus for our second location, something that's 24/7.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Abraham, and I know you did bring that forward, and some of our other members were there.
9:30 is early, because I told you, I've personally been there at...
You did.
Train comes in at 11 o'clock at night, and there, you have no access to the station in February, it's not very comfortable.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you, Director, and hopefully you take that feedback for the second one, see how the pilot program will end. The next public comment is Mr. Cullum, Eric Cullum? Is there any more of these?
Councilman Mayor, thank you. As your healthcare representative, I wanted you to know we're still meeting. Last week's meeting was canceled. Today, we had a meeting, and next week, we have one more. And hopefully, the first part of September, the mayor may be presenting you with something that we've been working on. But along those lines, I guess I would like to bring up something I've brought up in the past, and I feel that I need to bring it up again, and that is, the city now has the $47 million from the federal government. I realize there are funds, I realize they can only be used in a certain manner. As far as I know, only $7 million has been earmarked so far. That leaves $40 million. Also, as the mayor mentioned, the HUD fund, $16 million, that's for flooding, I understand that. But as I found out at one of your recent meetings, that from the 2122 budget, there's $6.6 million. So what I'm asking council to consider is amending the budget to cover the $6 million from the OPED fund, so that the active employees and retirees can get the benefit that they negotiated for, that they worked for, and they were promised. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Okay, and next we have Ted Barham?
Yeah, I want to, I want to thank you. I actually have a couple things to, a couple issues that are related to the council to bring forward. So one is, speaking of festivals, we enjoyed the Homecoming Festival, and I took my toddler and my mother, who was visiting. So that was great. But anyway, another festival that I would love to see be brought back is the Arab-American Festival. I'm so sorry to hear about how that came to an end several years ago, it'd be great if that could be brought back. We really enjoy Arab culture, and in some ways, we see it as closer to the Bible than secular American culture, speaking as a Christian. So just let us know how we can help with that, but we'd love to see that come back. Okay, the second thing is, I would just like to thank you very much for allowing us finally to do the park events that we have applied for. For the members of the audience who don't know, we're doing a series of events called Love Dearborn, and those will go for five Tuesdays, starting August 30th until September the 27th, and that'll be the Hemlock Park Shelter. It'll start at 7:00 PM, it'll end at 7:40 PM, and then there will be discussions and debates after that. The topics are not topics that will make everybody comfortable, but in the, you know, that's the nature of free speech. Some of the speakers will be former Muslims who will be speaking about the love of Christ. And so, yeah, I would just like to really celebrate your leadership in upholding freedom of speech and freedom of religion. I don't know if everyone's comfortable with that, but, you know, but it's important, especially after the attack on Salman Rushdie, just to see that, you know, that was in New York State, this is Dearborn, this is different. So I just want to thank you for that opportunity, and I want to thank you for that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any other public comment at this time?
I just want to make one comment, Council President.
Yes, Mayor.
Just theoretically speaking, as mayor, though, I strongly believe in the constitutional right to freedom of speech, but what I will vehemently oppose each and every single time is bigotry in all its forms, and that includes Islamophobia. So I just want to put that on the record.
I appreciate that. At this time, I'd like to have our community liaison, should be flash on, flash fast. So let's have, Mr. Hamud has an update, I think Councilwoman Harris had alluded to it, but we'd like to hear it right from the horse's mouth, you got it, you said it. Thank you, Mr. Hamud.
I do apologize, you guys have this update the last second. I got it at 6:45 from DTE, and I called them multiple times in the last 24 hours to make sure we have it in time for the council meeting, because like I mentioned in the committee of a hall, that I need something in writing fixing the issue. But first of all, I would like to officially introduce myself to the community.
Yes.
My name is Robbie Hamud, I'm the new neighborhood liaison. I'll be working out of the mayor's office slash in the back by the cubicles, but I will be one of two liaisons, work in the neighborhoods. Issues that the council gets, the mayor's office, we'll be going on the ground investigating, looking at the urgency of the issues, and escalating them to the top, or the priority that needs to be handled. With that, with that said, I look forward, I'm excited about the opportunity, excited working with the mayor, the administration, and everybody here. I think we all work together, we can make this work really well for everybody, all the residents of Dearborn. So back to the issue. On July 21st, the neighbors of the Dearborn Hills woke up to a fire in their backyard, their power lines got on fire. This is the second incident in the last three years that they had to deal with, and their big issue was, DTE comes out, turns off the power for a few hours, turns the power back on, nothing was changed, nothing was inspected. So the issue was brought to Council... So the issue was brought to Council President Serini, and he brought it to me, and I immediately went out to the neighborhood and met with the residents the very first day. And I made three or four trips during the week, you know, spoke with the mayor. Mayor has really good, strong contacts at DTE, passed them along to myself.
Speaking of Mike.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah. So he passed along the contacts that we do have with DTE. Immediately I reached out, and they happened to be here the Friday of the incident, and I spoke with the representative myself, and I expressed the urgency of this matter. The residents showed up to the committee of the whole on Thursday and expressed the urgency and the fear that they're living with. So they promised to come out Friday, which is the 19th, and they did. And they inspected the lines, and they found very quickly within, I think it was in 45 minutes they were out there, that the lines need to be replaced. So they spoke to the neighbors, and we came to the conclusion that this is going to take place. I needed a time, a timeframe, and how soon can they do it? Originally was scheduled for Thursday, Friday to start, due to some maybe weather this weekend, they delayed it till Monday, which is, we have it in writing now. It'll be the 29th, and it's going to go on for four days, possibly five. Power interruption will be two to four hours intermittent, and it'll be affecting 26 homes during the week. But they will be changing the primary and secondary power lines and five poles. And the neighbors are, they're very, they're ecstatic with this news, and I don't know if some of the council members spoke with any of them.
Right, yeah.
They're very happy. This is a three-year issue that they've been dealing with. And hopefully by the end of the week, next week, we have it resolved, and they don't have to live in fear anymore. So this is the projects that community liaisons work on, and be on the ground, working with residents. And like I said, I've been on the job for, this is my fourth week. I feel like I've already been on here for four months. And like I said, it's all good.
We really do appreciate it, and we do want to thank our residents for coming forward. I mean, one thing about Dearborn residents is they will voice their concerns, and they should. And we do appreciate it, because as you know, Robbie, before you went out there, DTE, several people had come out and said that, yeah, the lines are burned, but they're like that all over town. We understand it, but they're, you know, they didn't even have a method of testing them. And our residents came to the council demanding it, and I did contact you, and you went right out there to see for yourself. And yet, you know, like you said, the issue is, is to get something writing from DTE is very hard, and to get something done...
Oh, I demanded it, so.
I appreciate it. I really do appreciate it, and I know the residents do. And I think this is what this position was intended to do. That's just some of the things that you did, is this one. We also know about the other stuff you had told us on the committee of the whole, of stuff that was left from other construction jobs and streets for three or four years that you had, you know, residents call and been removed. So we do appreciate it, and there's nothing, Mayor, more effective than what you have instituted as grounds on the people, boots on the ground, to go right to the source of the problem. So we do appreciate that.
And I invite all the council members, I mean, of course, the mayor's and the administration, any issues that, I know you guys have day jobs, and you guys are busy with your careers and family, feel free, text me. Everybody here has my number.
Yeah.
You have an issue going pending, you know, I'll be there within five minutes. And literally, I've gotten calls, and within five to seven minutes, the neighbor said, "Were you outside?" I said, "No." I said, "I was in office, and I got in my car, and I came out." So, and this is, again, this is a great service for the city and residents. Like I said, I don't have a magic wand, but showing up, talking to residents, can I borrow some time?
Yeah.
But I mean, showing up, talking to the residents when they have an urgency or a threat in their backyard, it definitely makes them feel better.
Without question. I mean, my colleagues, Councilman Abraham remembers the late Nancy Hubbard, but she had told me many, many times, you know, you're not going to satisfy everybody, but the fact that you give them the time and you do attempt it, the people do appreciate it. They understand. People are understanding, but they don't want the lip service where, you know, nothing gets done or nothing's even attempted. So we do appreciate that.
Absolutely. And like I said, feel free. Feel free. Anytime you have an issue, a resident, pick up the phone, email me, text me, whatever, and then you'll get a quick response.
All right. Thank you so much. And thank you, Mayor, for instituting that. Is there any other questions or comments from people in the audience?
I don't mean to steal your agenda, Thunder, but it's coming up on 11 o'clock. For those who weren't here at the beginning of the meeting for public comment, I think it's worth pointing out that the council has revised its rules of orders, which specifically allow for public input, public participation at the beginning of the meeting, roughly 7:30 or very close to 7:30 at the regular meetings. So you're more than welcome to wait till the end of the meeting to the unknown time of 10:45, or you can come early, and there's a 30-minute time slot that the council has allotted for public comment, and you won't have to sit through this entire meeting to make your comments. Thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah. The council rules are in effect, and as Councilman Paris indicated, it was a long time coming. But we do, you know, when it affects all the members, we wanted everybody to be on board, and I appreciate all the work from every member, including Councilwoman Herrick that was on the phone away, and made some comments that I thought were very instrumental of making some changes. So we do appreciate it, and hopefully this continues to make a more efficient government. Any other questions or comments from anybody in the public here to speak on items pertaining to council business, city business? Hearing none, I entertain a motion adjourned. Motion adjourned by Councilman Bruce. We are adjourned.